Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I called over the meeting of the City Council of Thousand Oaks. For October 27, 2009, would you please stand and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag?
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk, please call the roll. Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gillette?
Here.
Mayor Glancy?
Here. Thank you. And requests for continuance public hearing or agenda item, we have none. So now is the time for our special presentation, so if you'd give me a moment just to get down to the podium, we'll do that. Okay, each year the City Hall highlights the rich diversity of our city staff by presenting a proclamation that recognizes said diversity. So I'd like to ask Associate Human Resources Analyst Elena Keenan to come forward and share with the audience just how we highlight Cultural Harmony Month. So Elena?
Thank you, Mayor Glancy. Good evening, councilmembers, city managers, city attorney. As Mayor Glancy mentioned, my name is Elena Keenan, and I am a member of the City Employees' Human Relations Committee. And this committee is comprised of employees from all departments at the city. And this is the fifth consecutive year that the committee has organized and planned activities related to Cultural Harmony Month. The purpose of Cultural Harmony Month is really to recognize and to celebrate the diversity of our city employee workforce. And so through that heightened awareness and understanding of various customs traditions of the employees within our work family. And so how do we accomplish this? As a committee, we have been involved over the last month, over the last several weeks in October, in planning various activities such as Cultural Harmony Committee Quiz that's distributed via email, and the International Day Celebration. Also, the city has sponsored some diversity training to enhance communication and interaction between individuals of different backgrounds and life experiences. So truly, it's been a wonderful month, an educational month for all of us, the city employees. But our culminating event is tomorrow, the International Day Celebration for city employees. And employees will bring a potluck of appetizers, desserts representative of various foreign cultures. And also during the event, we'll have employees showcasing various countries that they have visited or that they are from to both exhibit and display trinkets and items to be an educational experience for employees about that country and culture. So I would like to, on behalf of the Employee Human Relations Committee, extend an invitation to the council to attend our International Day Celebration, again scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, October 28, in the Founder's Room of the Cavali Theatre between 2:30 and 4:30. And to especially thank the council for your support in promoting cultural harmony here at the city of Thousand Oaks. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Elena, would you like to introduce the members of your committee? Are they with us tonight?
They are not.
They're not? Okay, fine. In that case, let me read the proclamation in honor of Cultural Harmony Month. Whereas the city of Thousand Oaks recognizes and values the ethnic and cultural heritage of all community members, whereas our city's diversity strengthens our community and presents us with opportunities for continuing economic growth and cultural enrichments while making Thousand Oaks a more interesting and better place to live and work, and whereas Cultural Harmony Month provides an occasion to focus on ways in which we can learn from each other and come to a common understanding of ourselves as a multicultural community with shared goals and values, and whereas the city will celebrate its multi-ethnic and multicultural heritage with the fifth annual Employee International Day Celebration sponsored by the city's Employee Human Relations Committee and the city of Thousand Oaks. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Glancy, Mayor of the city of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim October 2009 as Cultural Harmony Month and urge all citizens to celebrate Cultural Harmony Month. Thank you very, very much for what you guys do. Okay, for the second presentation, I'd like to bring forward Library Services Director Steve Brogdon. Hey, Steve. You know, you can always identify Steve because he's always got a big smile because of where he works. He is a librarian. And you know, the librarians, that kind of gets into something I wanted to say. Steve's department has taken some hits in terms of manpower in this constant quest to balance our budget. And yet, your staff continues to do an absolutely outstanding job. And we're always being complimented on the quality of your people and just what a great job they do. You've got a couple of special people with us. You want to tell us about them and tell us about what their accomplishments have been?
I do.
Please do.
I do. Thank you, Mayor Glancy. First, I'd like to say that the library staffing is totally a team effort, and it's from top to bottom, it's one of the best I've ever worked with, and it makes me very proud to do so. What also makes me equally proud is the work of these next two people that I'd like to bring up, Claudia Englund and Jeanette Barard. Would you please join me? Jeanette and Claudia represent our Special Collections Department at the library, and they've been working on a project for the last two years, three? Three years? And I have it here in my hand. It's a book called Catalog of the American Radio Archives Collection: Television Series and Special Scripts, 1946 to 1992. Now, it's probably not the kind of book that you would just sit down and read straight through, but it represents a tremendous amount of work. It represents 6,000 scripts in the American Radio Archives, which was founded by the Thousand Oaks Library Foundation, and it represents nearly 2,000 programs for which those scripts were written. So we're very, very proud of this. We also learned not too long ago that this book has been chosen not only to come out in hardcover, but it's going to be part of McFarland Press's ebook program, so we're very proud of that. And I wanted to mention just a little bit more about Jeanette and Claudia. They, Jeanette, they are each certified archivists. Jeanette is a master's degree librarian. Claudia is just about this far from a PhD in archaeology and has just, they have both added so much to our Special Collections area. We stole Jeanette from the Autry Museum, where she was specializing in sound recordings and photography restoration, and it dovetails very nicely with what we're doing. So I just wanted to bring them down, introduce them to you. I have copies of the book for each of the council members, and I just wanted you all to help me acknowledge the very hard work of Jeanette Barard and Claudia Englund.
Okay. Do you want to hear my comments? I guess we're going to have a photo first. Nice going, guys. Let's book them. Book them. Okay. Would the clerk please call public comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on the subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the city council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Three people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker is Patricia Jones, who is President/CEO of Alliance for the Arts. Patricia, followed by Keith Mack, followed by Nick Kidway. Good evening.
City of Thousand Oaks. I'm here representing the Alliance for the Arts, and I'm here to make an exciting announcement in that the Alliance for the Arts is partnering with the city of Thousand Oaks, as well as the three resident groups, the New West Symphony, Cabrillo Music Theater, and the Pacific Festival Ballet, to present the 15th anniversary of the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza. It's hard to believe, it's actually been 15 years since the center opened, and we're going to be opening or celebrating the 15th anniversary with Bernadette Peters. We're bringing her back, as you know, many of you know, she opened the plaza for us 15 years ago, and we're very excited that she's agreed to do a pop's concert utilizing 27 musicians from the New West Symphony. So this is the first time the Alliance has reached out to the New West Symphony, and we're collaborating on this production, and we're very excited about the synergy between the organizations. For those who attend, there will be something for everyone. Those who attend the show and get here a little bit early will be entertained by an incredible light show that the theaters is putting together, as well as several other entertainment features throughout the evening. So that'll be a lot of fun. Those who are attending the dinner, there's going to be a dinner in this room. We're going to transform this room into New York, so we're going to try to tie in with the fact that Bernadette Peters is a Broadway New York star. And during the dinner, we'll have an entertainment feature by Cabrillo Music Theater, and they're going to be doing Broadway music hits from Bernadette Peters. We're also going to be having dancers from Pacific Festival Ballet that are going to be serving the hors d'oeuvres, and they'll be dressed up like the Rockettes. So again, you're tying that New York feel in here. Also, part of the evening, we have a serious component, which we are honoring Chuck and Eloise Cohen with the Lifetime Achievement for the Arts Award. We're also honoring Elizabeth and Dr. Richard Grossman for the Children's Access to the Arts Award. So we're very excited to honor them. If you would like an invitation, please contact the Alliance for the Arts office or go to our website at www-allianceforthearts.org. And we hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? None? Thank you. Next, we have Keith Mack, followed by Nick Kidway, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Keith Mack. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I live on Las Robles Road since 1973 for almost 37 years. On October 8, the reason that I'm here is I need your help. On October 8 of this year, a couple of weeks ago, I became aware of some unusual activity in my neighborhood, as I've lived there for so long, there's a neighborhood kind of watch over there. And I went across the street from, around the corner from me, viewing a house, and I brought out my video camera, and I was taking some pictures of some people running around and inside a neighbor's house. And a masked man came up to me, he had a ski mask on, he had something around his neck, he had a holstered gun. And I was in the, across the street in the neighbor's yard with my camera, and when I asked him to identify himself, he refused to do it. He left, he came back again. This time, he came back with his own little pocket camera and started shooting pictures of me and another neighbor that was next to me. Again, I asked him to identify himself, and he asked me who I was, and I told him I was a neighbor, a concerned neighbor. And he said, "Where do you live?" I said, "In the neighborhood." He said, "Don't you worry." He says, "I'll follow you home." So at this point, I'm kind of worried about what's going on, and I noticed down the block, there is a patrol car. And a few minutes later, a uniform officer comes out. He, I questioned him as he's going down the street, and I've got my video running. He refuses to respond to me, which I guess he has the right to do. My friend and I moved down the block, and when one of these individuals are getting it out of the car, my friend questions him about some unquestionable activity he saw these individuals, who apparently are undercover cops, doing at the neighbor's house. And while he was talking to him, a, a, an SUV stopped, and somebody yelled at me, a guy with a beard, yelled at me and tells me, and tells my friend to shut up, and it's none of his business, and to just go home. And he gets out of the car, and three or four of these guys pull out their tasers, they aim it at my friend, so I start videotaping again. This guy ends up identifying himself later as a detective. He tells me to stop recording, which I comply. He continues at me, pushes me against the fence, he grabs my video camera, takes it from me. After several times of asking him what to do with this, he says, "I'm confiscating it. It's evidence." I says, "Evidence for what?" He says, "Evidence."
Mr. Mack, you need to wrap this up.
The reason that I'm here is I have handed you a complaint which I intend to file, but my, I don't know where my tape is. I don't want to bring a personal family member or friend to find out where my tape is or what's happening, and I'm wondering if you've got somebody who can go with me to whatever police department has my tape, so that if it's been changed or altered or missing, I have an unbiased source that can help and assist me.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. And I will say that the police chief would be more than happy to discuss this with you immediately, and the city manager will also put out some further information. Thank you very much for coming.
And where can I find them?
Right behind you.
Oh.
They're very sneaky. Mr. Kidway, followed by Suzanne Duckett. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy. Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, director of Concerned Cities in Thousand Oaks. I guess that's what this council meeting is supposed to be, is to make the city look good and have the police chief come forward as if the problem will be solved. But things are not that good in the city, that's why I have to come and take time out from my family. And I implore more people not to go to just tea parties, but come over here and see the ridiculous, unshameful behavior of this body. If you read the Star and the A-Con, you should be familiar with the heavy-handedness of the so-called COSCA agency against retired naval folks who have been taking care of their property and were just, I mean, given slap in the face until they were in the paper, and then the staff and the city backed off. I would like to get an answer, because there was another item that wasn't publicized, that you folks spent $100,000 on a study about improving the lakes project, which you have subsidized to the tune of 12, 15, 16 million. It's been almost a year. That gentleman, Mr. Caruso, despite all the hardships that the people have in this room, he's renting that property for $1 a year, and he's supposed to get a report every year to the city to show how poorly he's doing, so that if he makes 12%, then he doesn't have to give that money. The staff in 2006 were kind enough to give me this without any fight or anything like that, but I've been asking for three months from all kinds of staff people to give me a report, and I've copied the city council members in the past, and this report came out in April. And in the past, it was put in the consent calendar, which is a misuse of the democratic process, and now I guess it went into the council mail. I mean, and then we are supposed to say, I mean, this is a wonderfully run city government. We are just being priced out of our homes. I mean, this council, without any remorse, voted for the increase for the water rates, and today in the Star on the front page is another news that they will go up by another 10%. And so, I mean, when is this going to end? I mean, you folks did not take any action, because the Metropolitan Water District people voted themselves a 25% pay increase and a huge, huge increase in their salaries, and the Board of Supervisors took an action. The mayor should really write a letter to them and let them know that, their feelings. And then the city manager and city attorney's compensation, which is more than the vice president, is being done in a closed session. I mean, that's what the top brass is supposed to do, is this is the price that we have to pay. It should be done in the open session like it was done in this city. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Suzanne Duckett, good evening.
Good evening, Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. Last night, I attended the Planning Commission meeting and requested leadership from the Planning Commission to address a sign ordinance for these out-of-control leasing signs that are all over town. They make the city look like it's almost condemned and that there's no business going on here. We have a very strict signage ordinance in the city, and I would like you to agendize putting together a sign ordinance for these leasing signs. If I were a businessperson coming to this city, I would take note of how many leasing signs are out there and how much business is not being done here in this city. I would think about going to another city. There's absolutely no reason to build any more business along the boulevard with all of these unoccupied buildings. There is no reason for all of that signage all over town that makes us look like we're going backward and not forward. I would like you to be forward thinkers in how you can get this under control and make us look like we're a vibrant community, a business-doing people. I like to shop locally. But I'd be, you know, if I was a businessperson and I was in a building that had these for-lease signs all over, I would move. I would move out. So please be forward-thinking. I want that agendized, and I would like that, I would like you to be leaders of this city. And I would like that addressed tonight, at the end of this meeting, unlike last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duckett. Mr. Mitten, do you have follow-up comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, with respect to the gentleman who had concern regarding the police department, the police chief is now talking to that individual, and we will follow up accordingly on that. On the open space encroachment issue, we did have a successful meeting internally on Monday. We had a meeting today, and I was informed that planning staff has met with one or more of the affected individuals, and that's moving along, and we'll have a more thorough update for council in the near future. And that's it, my way of follow-up.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 7, City Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Any questions about the consent calendar? Yeah, Ms. Irwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item 7C.
7C, you say? Any other? None? Do you want to make a motion for the remainder?
Yeah, I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Okay, good. Please vote.
Speaker's.
Mr. Kidway, my apologies. Remove your motion, if you would. Mr. Kidway?
Good evening, Mayor Glancy. Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park. Don't really want to speak on the consent calendar, and it's supposed to be routine items, but anything but routine in this city, unfortunately. The minutes, I hope, I would like the TO TV to be kind enough to show the overhead. I have minutes from the November 20, the September 22 meeting. Yeah, it doesn't show on this monitor, which makes it difficult for speakers. Thank you, TO TV. Public comments. Paul Drynan, I think you know him, very active in the chamber. John Rich, Thousand Oaks. Suzanne Duckett, again. Kathleen Furness. Jenna Coell, city manager, or city employee, doesn't say a word as to what they spoke. I mean, this is just basic fundamental 101 government. I mean, this is what America stands for, is that you read the minutes, and it's on the internet, you know what's happening. Bless you. But Harry Salmon, beside his name, it says Civic Arts Plaza, CAP Board of Governors, Ad Hoc Strategic Marketing Committee Chair, Screen CAP Marketing Video. So I mean, this is just like the old country, I mean, where we, immigrants have come from. Special, I mean, VIP status for bureaucrats and people for the government, and the citizens are just treated like SHI. I mean, it's disgusting. I mean, we voted for you folks, we thought that some of you would make a change, but you don't want to, I mean, rock the boat, I guess, be just rubber stamps. Number F, authorize city manager to execute TO TV agreement. I mean, I went to FIOs, I did not really know, the taxes are killing me. I mean, it's 25, $26 more in taxes for, the city gets $5 to $6 every month on the FIOs thing, versus I had Dish, or if I had DirecTV, there's no taxes. I mean, what am I getting? What are the people getting? I mean, I would rather not have to pay or have all these fancy cameras. I mean, just a camcorder would do. Number 7G, additional appropriations, appropriation for Newberry Road. It's a half-page item. I mean, it's, I don't know how many millions of dollars, we are talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. It should not be on the consent calendar, it should be on a public votes report and discussed. It's a positive thing, actually. People should know what's happening, but it should not be done on a voice vote. Number J, contract for janitorial services. I mean, one of the few people, or in fact, not one of the few, people who supported me in City Hall were the janitors that were employed by the city, and without much of a discussion, you fired them and you are using outside companies. The people who are from outside, just like you're doing for the street cleaning, they will not do the work that city employees will do. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway, and again, my apologies for bypassing you. Ms. Irwin, would you like to restate your motion?
Move the consent calendar, except for item 7C.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Now, Ms. Irwin?
Yeah, I think item 7C is a pretty important item and I wanted to see if Mr. Adams could explain exactly what we're doing here for the public.
Not a problem. Tonight, staff is requesting that the city approve the city's participation in the Proposition 1A Securitization Program. First of all, let me apologize for not having a PowerPoint and it's a consent calendar item mainly because of the importance of getting this approved by November 1st. As you may recall, the governor assigned the budget package in July of 2008. This budget package, or 2009, required the city to do two things. One, to let them borrow $2.4 million in property taxes and also they are going to take or raid $7.4 million in redevelopment funding. This program, by joining the program, the city will be able to securitize the $2.4 million and sell bonds and get the money upfront. The benefits for this program is the city does not risk the state not paying us back and originally in September, staff recommended that we would use reserves to offset the revenue reduction. Staff is now back in front of you because the state of California determined that the interest rate that they were going to pay was 2%. In our original analysis, we were anticipating at least 3% and so it made sense to allow them to borrow and collect the interest. At 2%, we can earn that on our current investment portfolio and so right now the risk is not to allow the state to pay us back in three years but take the money upfront. So this program allows us to join the Prop 1A Securitization Program, allows us to sell bonds next month, allows us to get our revenues in December and May of 2010. Questions?
Ms. Irwin? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I'm just curious why this is coming in front of the council at the 11th hour.
Originally, when we brought the budget update based on the state impacts in September, our analysis was that the state would provide a 3% rate. The state provided an update the week after September 25th. We had to enroll in the program. It is a financing, so there is a sale and purchase agreement. We had to enroll, review those documents, complete the information, so it's, the turnaround has been four weeks since we originally enrolled in the program, which was the first Monday after the 25th.
You know, I don't recall that specifically if this information was provided to council originally when this whole thing went down with the state, but I do recall the questions regarding, what do we do if the state doesn't pay us back? Obviously, this was a contingency that staff was aware of, I'm assuming you're aware of it.
It was in the report and we tried to identify it. I think at the point, our recommendation was because at the time, the state had borrowed money either through IOUs or other mechanisms.
Right.
And the interest rate that they had paid was 3.75%. Based on what we currently earn, based on our portfolio, which is under 2%, the cost of enrolling in the program would have been $150,000 over the three-year period. And so at that point, staff wasn't willing to recommend to do the program. Now, because the interest rate is now 2%, which is closer to what our investment portfolio would earn, it's not worth the risk.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Ms. Irwin?
Thank you for that, Mr. Adams. I'd like to move 7C.
Thank you, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. And would you please announce public hearing 8A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, An Appeal of Planning Commission Decision to Deny Residential Plan Development, Major Modification 2008-70047, Oak Tree Permit 2008-70089, A Single Family Residence Located 5433 North Lakeview Canyon Road. The applicant-appellant is John Walsh. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking and speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. We have 18 speaker cards and pursuant to council standards, the applicant-appellant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal. The remaining speakers are allowed two minutes each and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Before we get into this, I'd like to acknowledge that I paid a visit to the Walsh home to take a look at what the situation was. It in no way impaired my ability to make a non-biased decision. Any other comments? Ms. Irwin?
Yeah, I'd like to disclose that I went by and saw the property also.
Dr. Schulte?
Mr. Mayor, I also have visited the site and walked the site and looked at it and walked the neighborhood and looked at it and walked the street and looked at it, walked the golf course and looked at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
I played the golf course, does that count? Also, I did visit the property and had a chance to review the site as well.
Thank you very much. No other disclosure? Okay.
I was contacted and invited to go and I declined.
Thank you. Okay, speaking for the applicant-appellant, we have Mark Sellers. No, 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 no. Thank you, staff. Sit down. Mr. Lynn, you're doing the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Tonight before you is case, an appeal from Planning Commission for denial of RPMJ 2008-70047 and OTP 2008-70089. Applicant's request is to allow recreational improvement within restricted use area and also encroachment into a 25% natural terrain.
Ms. Lynn, get up close to your mic, please, if you would. It's so hard to hear you up here.
The proposed improvement would be for two pad areas consisting of an upper pad made of retaining walls, proposed for a play structure and sports court. The upper pad currently has been graded for approximately about 5,000 square feet. A new proposal, it would be reduction to 2,631 square feet. Lower pad consists, currently consists of 4,608 square feet. The new proposal would be the reduction to 3,669 square feet. There's also, it does also include a deck expansion currently being built, which would be attached to the rear yard area with stairs. Oak tree permit application, which would also to allow encroachment into a protected zone of, currently it's encroaching into eight oak trees. The proposed application would be an encroachment into two oak trees while doing the remedial work for the rest of the oak trees. Staff like to state that oak trees are within the restricted use area. A bit background for this tract, tract 3507. In 1980, Planning Commission approved tract 3507 and RPD AD-274, which was for a custom home subdivision of 357 single-family detached homes consisting of 1,072 acres. At that time, Planning Commission approved the application, but it was proposed to delete four lots. All of these four lots included lot 41. Lot 51 was originally proposed as a separate lot that is adjacent to a subject property. The reason for the deletion of this lot was because it's 25% natural slope and also because of concentration of oak trees within lot 51. Developer appealed the city council in 1981. On appeal, the city council agreed that this area should be preserved but opted to allow this parcel to be absorbed into the subject parcel with the condition that this area to be protected as a restricted use area. In 2000, a PBD application and oak tree permit application was approved to allow construction of the Walsh Custom Home. It also allowed for the encroachment into a protection of five oak trees. Part of this approval, condition number nine of PBD prohibits grading into the 25% slope area, which is now part of the parcel. In 2007, there were unpermitted grading and construction undertaken within the restricted use area. Staff just like to add that house was approved for 12,752 square feet with 6,000 square foot of usable backyard area. In July 2007, applicant filed requests to modify the original RPD permit condition to allow encroachment and retention plus slash completion of grading and improvement. In December, Planning Commission heard the application and denied the request. Applicant denied appeal to the decision. In 2008, applicant redesigned the project to reduce the encroachment and on April 27, 2009, Planning Commission denied applicant redesign plans. In this case, currently, before you, the appeal to city council. The area view, this is the area view of 2005 picture before grading took place. This is the area view after the grading took place on the left portion, left half of the In comparison, the, currently the grading, the unpermitted disturbed area was 15,293 square feet. In 2008, the applicant requested a redesign, which was a reduction to 11,452 square feet. And out of this, this proposed encroachment, 32% is restricted use area. The 25% slope encroachment initially in 2007 was 14,593. In 2008, the proposed, the new proposed encroachment was for 10,752 square feet. Currently, the grading has been done, the combined pad area is 9,617. The new proposed redesign would be a reduction to 6,300 square feet. This will consist of a reduction from 1,200 linear feet of walls to 733 linear feet. The proposed oak tree encroachment for initially eight would be reduced to two. This is a view of the house from Lakeview Canyon Road. This would be the elevation of the house. This is the view of the left side yard area where the encroachment took place. This is another view of the proposed walls that's been built, the walls that's partially been filled. This is again, the view from the lower pad area looking up toward the Lakeview Canyon Road. This would be a view from the golf course area. This is a view of the side yard looking into the backyard of the house. This is a view of the proposed, the built deck expansion. You would find that the wall consists of approximately about 10 feet plus another three or four feet of railing. This is another view from the, looking at the deck expansion. The deck area consists of 390 square feet with a deck height over 10 feet. As staff had mentioned before, the upper pad, the revised pad design, the upper pad would be 2,631 square feet with the lower pad of 3,669, consisting of 700 linear feet of retaining walls at maximum six-foot high. The applicant is proposing to restore back 3,841 square feet of the slope. It is supplemental to EIR number 166 prepared, has been prepared for the project. It's determined that significant impact from the grading into the 25% natural terrain and environmentally superior alternative to allow retention of the expansion only while recommending restoring the balance of the restricted use area into natural open space. In this case, the EIR recommends a passive recreational area for this decked space. Analysis that this would be in conflict with city's policy for this particular grading into the protected natural slope over 25% grade. And also Planning Commission or council approval is required for any type of 25% slope encroachment. The property consists of 1.44 acres in size. Of the 1.44 acres, .82 acres are in the restricted use area. The .62 acres, which is approximately about 27,000 square feet, is used for the custom Also, the original project approval and also the PBD permit specifically calls out for that there's prohibited grading after the approval of the custom home. Staff does feel that encroachment as requested would be significant and contrary to the intent of the city policy and this would be a precedent-setting action. Staff recommending, recommending adopt resolution, which is attached to number three, attaching number three to deny appeal, uphold Planning Commission decision. This would also require the removal of all unpermitted structure and restoration of area to previous natural condition. This, staff is finished with presentations, available for comments or questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Questions, Mr. Fox?
In looking at the staff report, on a number of the staff responses, when you synthesize it down, staff is agreement with most of the appellant's statements. I mean, I'm making a statement here, but I just want you to reconcile, I'd like you to reconcile that, at least for me, is that on a number of the issues that are outlined in the appeal, it appears staff is either in its entirety or in part agreeing with the applicant, i.e., it's, I can read from the report, but does staff see it that way or do you see stark contrasts throughout the report? Do you want some examples? You know them?
Yeah. I, staff just, on the response that staff does agree would be that the proposed encroachment is not visible from the street. That would be one of the, I guess, the applicant's statement that staff may agree with. Staff does not have any other agreements with that, the appeal statement.
I think maybe I can augment that. There are some statements that the applicant make as part of their appeal. They're just kind of statements of fact and existing conditions and perceptions and those we really don't take any issue with, but I think the real crux of the matter is statement number seven, where the applicant states that the minimal encroachment does not violate city's 25% slope protection goals and we really do disagree with that. And statement number nine, that the appellant is saying due to the uniqueness of the situation and excessive administrative obstacles, this is not precedent-setting. We really do feel this would be a departure from city policy regarding the 25% slope standards. It's really been one of the hallmark environmental standards of the city since the general plan was adopted. I think we called out in the report the hillside ordinance, the conservation element and the goals and policies of the general plan.
Okay. Now, I, on seven, what I'm hearing is, is that they should have come in and asked for a permit before grading into the 25%. That's city policy. And then the Planning Commission and/or the city council or staff would have made a determination if minor grading into- if minor grading into 25% was appropriate. Is that a fair statement?
The staff doesn't have the authority to grant 25%.
Right, so, planning commission?
It would be up to the planning commission and subject to appeal to the city council.
Right. And is it true that there have been cases over the years that, that either the commission or the council has allowed minor encroachment into 25%?
Yes, there have. In fact, we've recommended that on other occasions.
Right. And one of the criteria is, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Prescott, is, one, can you see it? And, two, is it for greater development or is it for, for lack of description, reasonable use of yard and/or property?
The major reason that we recommend, there's really a couple of cases, and they mostly relate to basically brand-new development as opposed to somebody who's already got their lot developed and then want to expand the use of it. And those are situations where you have a lot that's a recorded lot and legal recorded lot, and the individual's entitled to reasonable and conforming use of the property. It's a vacant lot, and because perhaps it was subdivided before the city adopted its standards or even before the city incorporated, virtually the entire lot is over 25% slope or may be burdened with 25% slope and an oak grove or other environmental characteristics. And in those cases, we will, we will recommend, and usually the council or planning commission allows, enough of the 25% slope area to be used to enable a reasonable and conforming use. A good example, this is the house up on Corrine Hill Court that the council considered a few months ago. Another circumstance will be, and again, this is usually in the context of a brand-new development, if you have a site that's, you have little pockets of 25% slope, steeper than 25% slope, that are surrounded by areas that are flatter and where it really wouldn't make any sense to just keep that one small area, then we will make the recommendations to allow the encroachment into 25% slope. When we come to a property that's already been developed, and, you know, particularly in situations where there was a conscious decision made at the time of development that these properties were, this part was going to be developed and that part wasn't, at least in our recommendations, we're usually a lot more conservative.
Okay, thanks for that. On the appellate statement 1A, this is not pristine undisturbed natural area, not part of any important public viewscape, not part of any trail system, not next to any natural untouched open space, and not a designated wildlife corridor. Staff generally agree with those comments?
I think we, we agree it's not part of any trail system. It's across the street, I believe, from the open space that's owned by Koska. I know that a lot of the hills on the other side of Lakeview are owned by Koska. It's not a designated wildlife corridor. And as we pointed out in the staff report, it's really not visible from the public street. It's visible mostly from the golf course.
Right.
Some other homes in the nearby area. But I don't know what we're really talking about when we say not a pristine undisturbed natural area. Right now, it's not, obviously. But at the time before this grading was done, it was natural slope. It was required to be protected. So, I would categorize that as pristine. Maybe because it's a small piece surrounded by development, in some other person's opinion, it might not be considered pristine.
In the staff report, it talks that Lot 52 does not provide any significant wildlife habitat. However, it does serve as a natural pathway allowing the dispersal of terrestrial animals. What's a terrestrial animal?
Mr. Smith will address that.
That would be our friendly coyotes and bobcats and, and other animals that have larger territories. When I went out and looked at the site originally and when I was involved in preparing the conservation element of the city's general plan, I actually worked on track 3507, did the original environmental review of that, prepared the EIR. This open space area or restricted use area does have a definite connection, not only to the golf course, but Linderell Creek drainage and all of the adjacent open space. So, while it doesn't appear as a wildlife movement corridor specifically in the conservation element, it is definitely a pathway and it is used by wildlife.
Now, the proposal is just to put a lawn and a swing set back there, isn't it?
The current proposal is to reduce some of the grading impacts and restore a portion of the area. And actually, there's a sports court being proposed.
Right.
And there is some additional hardscape, there's a stairway and some additional access improvements that are proposed as well. So, it's not entirely grass.
But again, just for the clarification, you can't see this parcel from the road, you can see it from the golf course. And again, I guess this is a statement, but I'd like staff's feedback. If, if the property was improved, it would be, it could be fair to say that it would enhance the view shed from the golf course looking up?
Well, it certainly would repair some of the damage that's currently visible.
Right.
It would introduce new landscaping that's not there presently. Again, at one time, this was a very natural area. It was covered by oak trees and it was considered an environmentally sensitive area, so it was set aside as restricted open space for that purpose.
You know, looking at the aerial, it looked like there were some oak trees that were removed.
That is correct, and I actually worked on that M&amp;D as well. We received a, a letter from the applicant stating that there were allergies for people that were exposed to oak trees, and for that reason, there was a request to remove two mature oak trees. We also pointed out in the report that I prepared, which is a supplement, that the unpermitted deck extension extends into the area where those trees were originally located. But it's true, two oak trees were requested for removal for medical reasons and improvements have since been constructed in their location.
Were the requests to remove the oak trees, were they approved?
Yes, they were. They were approved because of medical reasons.
I got that, all right. So, there's no allegation of the illegal removal of oak trees?
No, there's not.
Right.
I think what you do have though is encroachment within the drift lines of other oak trees that was unpermitted.
Right. Okay. All right, fair enough. Thanks.
Further questions to staff? Ms. Irwin?
I think you'd never look in this direction, Mr. Mayor.
I'll try to do better in the next two meetings.
I had a couple of questions. The first was on the wildlife movement corridor. Is the property, I don't remember, is the property fenced off right now?
Well, there's been some debate over that particular issue. It came up as a part of the planning commission discussion. There is presently no barrier or no fence along the, the road fronting the property. We've heard from others who have visited the site, including myself, when I've walked the site, I didn't see any obvious barriers, but there may be a fence located closer to the, the golf course that I was unaware of. But it still is being, it's still accessible to wildlife. When I was on the site, it was evidence of, of tracks going through the property. So, it's, it's not closed off to wildlife.
If, if it happened, I don't know if it, if it happened to pass this evening, or would there be a requirement to open up the fence to make sure that, that that movement corridor is still there?
It certainly would be a good idea if there is an obstruction, if there are these improvements placed on the property. We've suggested that there be no lighting allowed specifically to, which is always an obstacle to wildlife continuing to use these sites after dark. So, it would, it would be my recommendation, and certainly would be a mitigation measure to remove any barrier that would prevent wildlife from moving through the site.
Okay. And then it refers here to the retain, the unpermitted retaining walls. Are they also not to code because they weren't standing up when I saw them?
Well, I'm not an engineer and I'll just speak briefly to that. We have photographed the failure of those retaining walls. They were not properly installed, and we've heard testimony to that, to that effect. There's a considerable amount of work that needs to be done on this site. The site has been destabilized from a geotechnical standpoint. The fill that was placed on the site was not properly benched. There are no keyways supporting the fill. So, there's an awful lot of remedial grading that's necessary to be done out here in order to just stabilize and repair. A lot of the damage that was done to the hillside is a part of this unpermitted grading.
And so, I assume that the, I guess the speakers will address that, whether those issues are going to be resolved if it happens to pass. Then, my last question is on the December 10, Planning Commission meeting. It doesn't, what I see here is that it just refers to that the Planning Commission thought that the, that the project was too large and, and that it should be made a more appropriate size. But it doesn't say anything about the Planning Commission saying that this would be precedent setting. Did the Planning Commission just say it was going to be precedent setting the second time they saw it, or was that statement made on the December 10, 2007 meeting?
I think there was a concern expressed by some of the commissioners at both meetings that it would be precedent setting. It wasn't their only concern, and I don't think it was the principal reason they denied it. I think that was the fact that it was really, in their view, a violation of, you know, a pretty standard city policy about grading areas like this.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Dr. Gillett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Smith, if I could please, I'd like to talk a little more about the, about wildlife movement in here. On the north side of the, of those sand traps and what have you, what's over there? Is that residential development or open space, or what is it?
I'm not familiar with a golf course, do any...
Okay. All right, then let me rephrase...
Councilmember, I can, I can address that.
Please, Mr. Prescott.
Yeah, once you get past that hole in the golf course, I believe there's an Arroyo and perhaps another one coming up the other side, and then there's another residential development out in the middle of the golf course.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm trying to, in my own mind, see the wildlife movement across the golf course, very meticulously cared-for landscaping, to the property, then to the shrubs, and then to Lakeview Canyon Road. It would appear to me that the property in question has significant barriers on either side, and homes on either side, east and west of it. So, it, it appears, and from looking at it, that it's pretty well boxed in by, by, for lack of a better description, development.
And, and that's really the reason why it serves as a pathway. What happens here, and I'm, I'm not going to go into great detail, but typically what happens is when urban development encroaches in these remaining open space corridors, whatever is open and freely accessible becomes a pathway. The golf course, you've probably seen coyotes on the golf course yourself if you've played there. Bobcats cross the golf course. Mule deer cross the golf course. And wherever they can have access to undeveloped open space, even if there's a road that they have to cross, they'll use it to gain access to larger open space areas. And we have a lot of open space in the North Ranch. This happens to be one of the pathways, but there are a number of others similar to this. And when it was undeveloped and when it was open and accessible, it was used much more frequently. But it continues to be used by accident. It continues to be used by wildlife, and there's evidence of wildlife moving across this site.
Is it, is it your feeling, Mr. Smith, that the, the placement of the, of the shrubs along the roadway, which I understand has provided a deterrent to trash dumping and what have you on this site, that that also impedes movement?
That has no effect whatsoever on, on the movement of, of most terrestrial animals, including deer. They'll go right over that or they'll go through it. Coyotes and bobcats will do the same thing, so that's no deterrent whatsoever.
Okay. But your, your concern is that the playfields, developed playfields and these walls and what have you would, would act as a deterrent?
Well, I think the best analogy that I can put forth is, I think, a year or so ago, when we were talking about another piece of property over on the Mont Cliff Ridge, we were talking about the minimum width of a wildlife movement quarter that would be suitable. The California Department of Fish and Game and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service told us then that they felt that 200 feet was an absolute minimum, and they recommended 500 feet. So, we've, we're really at the minimum here for this restricted use area performing as a viable movement quarter. So, to further restrict it would be, in my opinion, you know, an effect that would need to be mitigated.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Oh, no. Anya, please.
Thank you. I didn't mean to interfere if you wanted to go ahead first. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. When this project was built, there were obviously several of these parcels, perhaps more than a dozen, have restricted use areas. Is that correct or incorrect?
Yes, that's correct.
And what was the intent of having these restricted use areas? Or the purpose?
Yeah, for the most part, they were areas within the lot that were over 25% slope, and that's the reason for this.
And is that the reason why the Planning Commission then, as one of its legal findings, mentions the, the conservation element of the general plan because of the 25% slope?
Right. The city's policies relating to 25% slope are contained in the goals and policies section of the general plan itself and the conservation element of the general plan. And then also, they follow through with the hillside ordinance and the grading ordinance.
Is it your opinion that today, this restricted use areas, area of Lot 2052 is, is damaged?
Yes. I mean, the terrain has been substantially disturbed.
In reading a memorandum from George Moore, who is a landscape architect and oak tree specialist, he says in his memo in our staff report on page 25, about his evaluation, what he found when he had a field trip two years ago, and the last paragraph, perhaps the last two, sound a little bit, perhaps, I shouldn't say incense, perhaps incense is too strong a word, but he thought, and it was his opinion, that no oak tree permit should have been, or should be, should be approved, that an oak tree permit should be denied, the walls be removed, and that all damaged roots be cleanly cut and sealed. Has that been followed through?
Could you tell me what page again?
It's page 95 of our staff report. He mentions that the oak tree report used to remove the two oak trees for medical reasons contained false information, in his opinion.
Okay, and your question again? I'm sorry.
The question was, he made a recommendation. Did anyone adhere to the recommendation?
Yes.
Did city staff adhere to the recommendation and deny the oak tree permit?
Well, the oak tree permit is, was denied by the Planning Commission because it was associated with the original, this was from 2007, the original RPD permit major mod for the grading and the play, play yard. And that application was denied. And then they refiled a new application, along with the new application that we're considering tonight. That application was denied by the Planning Commission, and it's on appeal to city council tonight, so...
Thank you for the clarification. And Mr. Moore, I did not realize you were actually here tonight. Sorry if I missed you there in the... Sorry if I missed you there in the audience, but perhaps you can augment the comments made by Mr. Prescott. I'm speaking about your memorandum from May 29th, 2007, your evaluation of the condition of the, the floor there after your field trip.
To my knowledge, the permit was never issued. That's one of the things that's had issued tonight. And the, the work was not observed by their oak tree consultant and the work was done without a permit, so no one was there to see the work done, and that's why I made the recommendations I did.
Okay. It says here, "The inference in the oak tree report was that previous grading in the area had already been done and that no significant root loss had occurred." In my opinion, is false. Do you recall writing that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. That was pretty much the only question I had regarding your, your memo. Thank you very much. I would also like to bring to your attention the letter by the HOA to the Walsh family, written by Dan Whitting, architect of the Architectural Committee, about the improvements being made, on page 98 of our staff report. The applicant or the appellant was made aware that this was a restricted use area, that nothing could be built, and I'm quoting now from the memo, that there would be no new improvements being done. However, when the Architectural Committee looked into that, they saw that retaining walls had been built. And the city was contacted by the HOA as a result of this, and that is how we all are here tonight, or arrived at this point tonight, because the initial complaint was filed by the appellant's own HOA.
Yes, that is correct. This letter was forwarded to city and went to, initially went to CoCo Land Department.
And it has been mentioned a few times, but it is also being used as a legal finding by the Planning Commission, that it, the fear is that this particular case, if, appeal if granted, could be precedent-setting because of the dozen or so other properties which have restricted areas as well?
Um, I'm going to address that a little bit. To me, the bigger, the bigger precedent is the allowance of grading in natural terrain over 25% slope when there's already reasonable use of the property. And the reason I say that is because there are many more instances throughout the city where you have land over 25% slope that has not been formally designated through an entitlement procedure as a restricted use area. So yes, it bears upon the, those cases where there are restricted use areas, even in the same tract as we indicated in the staff report, but also I think there's a larger city-wide implication as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Prescott, you stated that, that land was designated as restricted area by virtue of its 25% slope. Is that right?
Uh, yes, I believe that's the reason in that area, and the oak trees.
Okay. I noticed that we had a, a fair number of letters of support from various members of the HOA board. Do you know if we've received formal approval of this project by the HOA board formally?
No, we have not.
Okay. On page four, we talk about the applicant having reasonable use of the, the property. No, I beg your pardon, it's passive recreational purposes. Now, I'm living with a situation that deals with passive recreation, and it's, it's a real sticky subject as to how we define that. So how would you define passive recreational use?
That typically would be a recreational activity that didn't involve altering the character of the natural landscape. Hiking is one, picnicking, nature study, bird watching, that sort of thing, as opposed to active recreation, which would be your, you know, your field sports and basketball, tennis, stuff like that.
Does it imply at all less use?
I think what it really implies is, is no disturbance of the natural land.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And typically those, you know, the, the more active sports are not suited to sloping terrain. But there wouldn't be anything that would prohibit anybody from throwing the frisbee out there, going and playing catch, or anything like that, and using the property. It's just the restrictions are on the, on the grading of it and the construction of any structures on it.
What about a baseball game?
Um, have at it.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions, the staff? None? Guys, thank you very much. Now, Mr. Sellers, it's, it's finally your turn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Mark Sellers, Jackson DeMarco, here on behalf of the appellant. Residence, Thousand Oaks, business office, Thousand Oaks. I've got some handouts here I'd like to pass to the council. I think one of the issues, and as the council members already addressed, seeing the site is very important, understanding how the terrain works there, and the visual impacts of this particular property, as well as this project, are very important. It was mentioned that the, about the homeowner's association letter, that letter was a, as I look at it, a turf issue. They wanted to be involved in any approval of any structures in that particular area. There've been a lot of, number of public hearings. They have never appeared at any of the public hearings to oppose this project. They had plenty of opportunity, and we haven't heard one word from the homeowner's association that they're opposed to what's being planned here for this side yard play area. Originally, the Planning Commission heard this. After the hearing, there was much debate on whether this original application was going to be denied with prejudice or without prejudice. The council, the Planning Commission decided to deny it without prejudice specifically because they wanted to see a smaller project come back. There was a lot of testimony to that. There was no issue, no mention of precedence in that discussion at the end of the meeting. Rather than appeal it, the Walshes decided, let's do a smaller project, reduce the project by 37%, brought it back to the Planning Commission. It's that they pay for an environmental impact report, which is probably the biggest presidential issue on this whole thing, that there's a supplemental EIR for side yard play area. I've never heard of such a requirement. It came back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission again didn't express any concerns about the project, or its design, or what was being proposed. At the end of the meeting, the discussion was, they were concerned about the presidential nature of the approval. What I feel is that, and I understand the importance of the 25% slope criteria, but any blind allegiance just to a standard, without looking at the particular facts and what surrounds this particular site, I, I think is not proper. I asked the city council to look at the facts, look at the situation, look at what's being achieved here from the public's point of view, rather than a blind allegiance to a standard. We don't feel this is going to be precedent-setting because the key issue in the 25% slope criteria was visual impact. And we already talked about how there hasn't, doesn't seem to be dispute, that there will be very little, if any, visual impact of this particular project. If you look at the similar sites with restricted use designations on the, the properties, they're on hillsides, they're higher up. They may not be the appropriate candidate for an expansion or any grading in the 25% slope because they are such high visible pieces of property on a hillside. We've also looked at the Charles Probst House, who was a, a name that the city may be familiar with, who lived on the corner of Westlake Boulevard in Canaan, on a high-profile parcel. He developed the house right on the top, on the very ridge line of his, his parcel, and then remained, designated the remainder of the parcel restricted use area. About four years later, came in and asked that, that restricted use area be lifted so that he could put a park-like landscaping in place of the natural setting. So there's already precedence for this, and I think this site is even a, a better site because of the hidden aspects than that particular site. The staff raised three factors in looking at evaluated 25% slope. One is already mentioned. Does it lead to overdevelopment of the site? We're not talking about adding another home, we're not, talk about adding another building. We are basically talking about a small play area. And the reason we want the play area is for the recreational active use of the children. They want at least the distance so you could throw a baseball from the pitcher's mound to the home plate, in a flat area. Yet that, that accomplishing goal cannot happen with this concept of passive recreation. It's really for the play court and their children that they're for you tonight. The other criteria or factor is, does it cause unsightly development of the property? I think if you take a look at the pictures, at the quality of development the Walshes have put into their home and effort and money, that this will be nothing but an enhancement to that area. Why do I say that? Because the area is the, in the annual brush clearance area. It's not a pristine untouched area. Each year they have to, they pay somebody to go out and weed whack the entire slope. When slopes are weed whacked, sometimes you have erosion issues. This is the site of a storm drain outlet that drains the entire hill up above. So again, it's not untouched and without human alterations of this particular site. There was some discussion earlier about, is there a fence? There is a fence. The fence is there because this is a golf course. The golf course does not want people wandering onto the golf course. The golf course put a fence up there. And animals seem to get over and under and through that fence without any trouble whatsoever. Animals cross the entire golf course without any trouble whatsoever. There's not going to be any problem with animals crossing this play area, and Mr. Dean can talk about that. And again, the final criteria is, is there a loss of the site's natural terrain? We've talked about it. This is a weed whack area. This is not part of any larger open space area. There's no trail system. This is a rather heavily-traveled street that's right next to this particular site. And I just think, to me, this is a natural expansion of their home. It's not some isolated area far from their home. It's right next to the house in their actual structure. With that, we've looked at the 36 conditions, and they're all agreeable. We have no problems with that. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Dean to talk about the specifics of the project and this issue on wildlife movement.
James Dean, landscape architect. I've been practicing in Thousand Oaks for 43 years. I have 50 years with experience with oak trees. I was on the original team that designed North Ranch with Prudential, and actually was involved in this original approval of this tract. As far as the oak trees go, I've never heard before that there was some belief system that, that was, something was misquoted or whatever. I've never been told that before. I did the original oak tree report, my first oak tree report, for the original site, and the city has, kind of has a policy that every tree on the site has to be included, so I had the map and the report, original report, there. The next time I got a phone call was having to do with the two trees that were affecting allergies. I had two doctor's reports, both suggesting that they, that these two trees specifically needed to be removed because of the closeness to the bedroom. And I had those in hand and I wrote the report based upon that. And I think it was reasonably dealt with. The, there's, there is no problem with the oak trees, and they've been somewhat affected. They will not die. There'll be probably no detectable change in their growth pattern. It's been two years now. I have to use an example of the tree that I transplanted right out here, which is a full-grown 48-inch tree, and that's been five years and still living and doing, doing great. I have no fear that these trees are going to be affected. There is one critical issue. Off to the west, at the very corner of the property, there's a natural arroyo that came down through there, and it's been channelized under the street, and there's a head wall, and, and it dumps water constantly from the other side of the street, and it runs down, joins the, their property, turns and parallels the, the golf course, and there are probably, I, I forget, but I think there's about five or six trees in there that are sitting in water. What's happened is, the natural flow has been obstructed by the golf course, basically, the growth in the golf course. And the water stands there, and one of those trees is already dead. The rest of them are being badly affected. I also, when I first got involved after the fact, after these walls were built, I was asked, the, the city had given them a stop work notice, and I went to the golf course people and I asked them about the water coming down, the daily water that would be attributed to the, the new design. And they took me around the golf course and showed me major, major concerns they had about water coming onto the golf course. There was one little tiny bit of water coming from the Walshes' property there, and I, I suggested that we solve that problem, and that's part of the plan today. Let's see, I want to address some other things. Give me one second. So there, as far as an animal train, as far as the animal issue goes, the whole half of the restricted area of that whole site, all the development areas to the right near the house, and the other half of that property is natural now and will be restored to natural. I would expect that the animals would be coming from the corner where that natural drainage flow came down. They would be following water, crossing the street, and I would expect one day to, for the Walshes to look out in the morning and see deer eating their grass. I really expect that would happen. The, one of the issues that was brought up at the Planning Commission was, had to do with, one of the lady commissioners was concerned about, concerned about safety, and we solved that problem. She was concerned about them falling off the walls. We eliminated, originally there was three walls built stair-step down to the golf course, and those have been eliminated in the plan. We put that back to a graded slope, planted slope. There's one wall still at the top, and the purpose of that wall was to be able to sink a guardrail into it and not have it rust out so the kids wouldn't fall over the wall. So we have, we've, we're diligently trying to solve this problem, and I think we were successful, in my, in my opinion. One thing, oh yeah, Henry, I handle all that. Okay. And that's basically includes my point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Ms. Walsh?
I would like to introduce Mrs. Walsh. No questions?
No. Good evening.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Shanida Walsh. Our family has, looking forward to this evening for quite some time now. My husband wanted very much to be here, but unfortunately, many months ago, he made a commitment to leading a group of men in a bar in once-in-a-lifetime experience. We had never imagined that, creating a small play area in our side yard would be such an ordeal. Since every year, we spend some time and a lot of money for weed abadments, trash cleanup insurance, and property taxes for this area. That is over half acres. We thought we could improve their appearance and have some recreation use of this portion. You have already heard many reasons why this minor improvement makes common sense and is consistent with the 25% slope protections principle. We believe a principle is a guideline, and every site and project is different. This principle should not just be blindly applied to reject our projects or why even have this hearing. We feel our lot is very unique. We hope the City Council members will look at the facts, and I believe allowing this play area for my children is the right kind of precedence. Lastly, I want to thank all of our friends and neighbors for being here this evening. I am very touched by your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ann Lalo, followed by Lynn Carmen Gormley, followed by Jay Markowitz. And I would ask people that are speaking subsequent to the present, please position themselves down in these chairs.
Good evening, mayor, city council members, and concerned residents of Thousand Oaks. Mr. and Mrs. Walsh and their family are our friends and neighbors, and all they want to do is improve their side yard so their kids have a safe place to play. They have received nothing but grief regarding this small piece of land on their property and have spent thousands of dollars regarding this issue, and still they have been denied a permit. The way they have been treated is as if they were trying to build a cement building 10 stories high rather than a landscaped side yard play area for their children. This will enhance the value of the neighborhood instead of the weeds and brush, which currently exist in the side yard and have to be annually cleared to prevent a fire hazard, which they also pay for, yet still can't use the land. There's no opposition by any of the neighbors or the surrounding North Ranch Country Club Golf Course for this project, yet Mr. and Mrs. Walsh are still denied a permit. This project won't harm anybody, but it will give their children a safe place to play instead of on their dangerous street, which has no sidewalks, and there have been two traffic-related deaths in the last 24 months. It would be nice if our elected officials looked at each case individually rather than a one-size-fits-all mentality. Please approve their project for the family and for their kids to play. Thank you. The Lalo family. My name is Ann Lalo of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you very much for clearing that for me. Next speaker is Lynn. Cameron Gormley, thank you, followed by Jay Markowitz, followed by Lisa Markowitz.
My name is Lynn Cameron Gormley. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, been here for about 25 years. I have nothing prepared. I wanted to sit here and take it all in. I think that it behooves all of us to embrace what the Walshes want to do with their property. I do believe you have to see it to understand it. I believe that Ta Walsh has been through a lot trying to get this approved. She only wants to do what's right for the community and her family, and I do hope that you'll consider all the testimony you've heard. I'm not a scientist. I know that the coyotes are in my neighborhood, and there's no way that they're not going to be able to get through any amount of land in this town. And I think that you should just let her be and let her do what she needs to do for her family. She's not ruining the property. She's making it the best she can. And I am just sitting here remembering at the beginning of the testimony that it seemed to me originally, the first planning commission said a house could be built on this piece of property, and now the planning commission is changing. I mean, they change with every member of the planning commission. So originally, they wanted a house on this property. That was approved. Obviously, that's not what they're talking about doing, so I think we should really consider their request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Markowitz, followed by Jay Markowitz, followed by Brian Ord.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Just a little background, I've known the Walsh family as a friend and a neighbor for over 10 years. I know them to be upstanding members of the community. Their personal and business affairs have always been conducted with the utmost integrity. They're charitable, responsible people. Improvements to their home and property have always been done by professionals in a timely manner, resulting in increased value and aesthetics not only to their property but to the surrounding neighborhood. I live in the Thousand Oaks portion of Westlake Village, and I travel Lakeview Canyon often. It's not a kid-friendly road, which is the main reason why the Walshes have been trying for a really long time and at great expense to create this safe play yard. And they've always wanted to do it within the regulations and requirements set forth in the city. It's been a long progress. There've been difficulties and setbacks, mistakes have been made. They recognize that. They've modified plans, and I believe they're still willing to modify plans, always in an effort to keep the project going forward while working with the city. They reached the end of the road with their appeal to you here tonight, and I think they're looking forward to you, to recognize the history of their efforts and how those efforts relate to the property today, 2009. The restricted use area designation on the lot is out of date, given what the area is like today. So I would support your reversal of the planning commission's decision and allow the project to stay alive and progress while at the same time have it meet reasonable expectations of the planning commission for the location as it stands today, 2009. It's also lastly important to note that the project has always had full support of the surrounding neighborhood, the North Ranch Country Club, from where it has the most visibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Markowitz, followed by Brian Ord, followed by Negin Mohammedzadeh.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. My name is Jay Markowitz. I have been a resident of North Ranch for more than 12 years, and I maintain my law office here as well. Several months ago, I along with many others appeared before the TO Planning Commission to rise in support of the same plan now before you. I spoke as a longtime friend of the Walsh family and restricted my remarks to the virtues of the project and the family that hoped to enjoy it. After an hour or so of supportive comments from North Ranch residents, friends, technical and professional speakers, the planning commission summarily denied the Walsh permit and ordered the parcel to be returned to an unused, unbuildable piece of property whose main function is to serve as a drainage flow through to the North Ranch Golf Course, much to the disappointment of the course superintendent. It was only then that I realized that the commission and its staff, despite seemingly to encourage many modifications that would make the plan more palatable, never intended to approve the project in any form. Instead, the commission forced the Walshes to spend tens of thousands of dollars on legal and architectural fees and plenty of false hope, but in fact, they sought to reaffirm their singular authority to exact retribution upon a family that had started a benign project on a parcel adjacent to their residence, which they owned without securing a permit first, an apparent terminating sanction. In addition, at the last hearing, the commission kept referring to precedent as the ultimate impediment to approval of any plan for the parcel. Perhaps they lacked the complete understanding of the concept, which they so firmly used as a shield to defend their denial. Precedent is a reflection of the courage and foresight of an authoritative body, which acknowledges a circumstance that at its core either disregards or expands existing rules or regulations, yet they still give credence to its importance and necessity. Although existing precedent is to be given, deference is not made to the, although existing precedent is to be given, deference, it is not made of stone. It lives and breathes like much, like our constitution and is subject to common sense and good intentions.
Mr. Markowitz.
I should thank the council for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Walsh family and support of their plan to develop a portion of their property as a play yard. I know the Walshes to be exemplary parents, citizens, business professionals. They have consistently demonstrated a high degree of competence, compassion, and community service, which is reflected in the daily lives of their four children, beautiful home, and charitable endeavors.
Mr. Markowitz. Mr. Markowitz. That's it.
Therefore, it is respectful that this council demonstrate courage, foresight, and independence and vote to approve the Walsh plan. Thank you.
No offense, but that's rude. Brian Ord, followed by Negin Mohammedzadeh, followed by Walter Babchuk.
Brian Ord, City of Thousand Oaks, been a resident of Lang Ranch for nine years, and I'll try to keep this under a minute to make up for the last speaker.
Thank you.
Second time in 10 years I've been here to speak. Not here weekly, like some other folks. I have to commend the council for the patience that they have. I could not do what you do on a, on a weekly basis, that's for sure. The lack of common sense would drive me crazy. And that's really what this project comes down to, is common sense. If somebody asks you to go back and revise a project downward, that would give you some indication that the project might be approved or that you're within the parameters. So I really think, the question is, is the government going to work with the citizens on a common sense basis to come up with an equitable solution? I think the Walshes have done that, and I'd urge you to approve their project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Negin Mohammedzadeh, followed by Walter Babchuk, followed by Bob Schuster. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Negin Mohammedzadeh. I would like to thank you for not butchering my name. You pronounce it so well. I appreciate that. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for 15 years, and I've known the Walsh family for 12 of those 15 years. Our children have been friends, and I know them really well. They're outstanding citizens and great friends. I'm just here as a friend to give them my support and to ask you to please listen to their requests. They're just trying to, they have four children. The street is really unsafe, and I think this is a very harmless improvement that they're trying to make. And if you've seen the site, they've done an amazing job with their house, so I'm sure whatever changes they make will be aesthetically very pleasing. Thank you so much for listening to what I had to say.
And thank you. Walter Babchuk, followed by Bob Schuster, followed by...
Marshal Herndon.
Thank you so much.
My name is Walter Babchuk. I live at 5075 Lakeview Canyon Road, which is just about eight or nine houses up the block from the Walsh house. I'm also a registered engineer in the state of California way back in 1956, and there are probably 60,000 or 70,000 engineers that have followed me. And I follow the construction of the place, and today and once before, I walked the site. And I think that is a very important point for all of you to do in making this decision. I would like to apologize to the staff here. I've had a cochlear implant, and I'm just learning how to hear better, so I was unable to get all the comments that you made. But it seemed to me what I did here was, the two main issues was the 25% slope issue and precedent. In walking the site, you have to realize this area is not visible from either the street or both neighbors' side. The only side that is visible is from North Ranch Country Club, and I'm a founding member of North Ranch Country Club. And in discussing this with the club members that I've seen, they'd be very pleased to see the Walsh family put in what they are planning, which is an enhancement to the area, even better than the natural wooded, weeded slope that was there before. As to precedent, precedent, I was also a general partner for Morrison Ranch and also the Carriage Square Homes at the end of Moore Park in Thousand Oaks. And I'm very aware of precedent issues and the concern that the staff would have. But in this regard, when we started that project of over, over 1,300 and some houses, we formed a committee to evaluate any comments or variations people had. And when somebody came to us with a well-planned idea or a change that was an enhancement that did not negatively affect the neighbors on each side, and that was unique, we took that into account, and we did make, we did make approvals.
Mr. Babchuk, pardon me for interrupting you, but you need to wrap it up.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up, sir.
Oh, okay. I suggest you approve this because it has all the elements that I said.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to quickly announce that there's a, if anyone's missing a cell phone, it was left at the entry, left at the entry table, and you can check with the city clerk. And if it is yours, please turn it off. Beth Schuster, followed by Mr. Herndon, followed by Marjan Yivari.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and the staff. This is my first time being involved in this, and I appreciate it, and it's an amazing honor to watch this go on. It's a very emotional thing as well. I don't think we take ourselves and what we all do seriously enough, but it is a serious matter when you're talking about a very busy street. And this home is not just a home for the Walshes, it also is a home for many children in the Thousand Oaks area. As a working mother and one who has lost their home, but is no longer paying property taxes, but still is a rent and voter in the community, I would like to share with you that this, this home is one to many, many, many children. My husband has also had the privilege of working with a gentleman by the name of Joe Edmiston for the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy. I'm sure you all are very well aware of his name, so I do respect what you do. But in this situation, you are looking at a piece of property that is, I would say, more beneficial for the children of the area than it is for the coyotes, which would still be able to make their passageway through. It is an eroded area where rats hang out and it's infested, and it is not a very beautiful, well-kept piece of land. I feel that the benefit that the Walshes will give to this area would be of much better use than leaving it as a piece of unused land that you so wonderfully do your job with so many other pieces of property around our area. So I would like you just to rethink this and take that into consideration, and I appreciate being able to speak.
Thank you very much. Mr. Herndon, followed by Marjan Yivari, followed by Richard Wagner.
Good evening. Good evening, Marshal Herndon, general contractor of the Marshall Group, brought you a famous restaurant called Sukie Seven. Oh yeah, it's a Mexican restaurant now. Never mind. Without prejudice, I did not walk the property with the mayor, or the mayor pro temp, and I have not played golf with Mr. Fox, although I'd like to, he's a handsome man. He can attest more than anyone that the only side that this project can be really seen from is the golf course side. And if you're a fine ball striker like Mr. Fox, you're admiring your ball in the middle of the fairway, unlike myself, and you're off in the weeds looking for your ball, which is the only time you would maybe look up and see the Walshes' project. I live on Canaan Road in Agora. I have 10 acres there. I raped two acres of that, and with the help of fine people like Mr. Jimmy Dean, replenished that land with over 400 trees. As far as the extraterrestrials are concerned, I can attest to you that the coyotes really don't care where they do their fecal. Their movement is not restricted anyway, nor the raccoons, nor the ox, or the antibodies, or the rats, or the, I do have a rat problem. I have nothing in common with the Walshes, other than we both have four kids, we both speak English, almost. And our kids go to the same school, or some of them. I've never worked for the Walshes. I've only been to their house three times. I'm not on their payroll, and the only time I've ever done any construction for the Walshes is Ta leveraging me to build haunted house at school. So I'm in favor of their project, and I agree with everything, not everything that everybody said. And give Mr. Mark, he's an attorney. He's, he's okay. He's a good guy. He talks a lot, but he's a good guy. There needs to be levity and adjustment, and I agree with people saying that you need to look at each case on an individual basis. They do have a little bit of a dirt instability problem. I don't know what we're going to do down at the corner of TO Boulevard in Landale with that dirt problem we've got going on down there with instability, with that grading. But I think, and their generosity I've seen over and over and over again, and got to realize, as one woman said, that it won't be just her kids playing there, it'll be other people's kids playing there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marjan Yivari, followed by Richard Wagner, followed by Victoria Monina.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, council members. Thank you for giving, allowing me to speak. I'm a family friend of the Walshes, and I'm also a resident of Westlake Village. I am also an interior designer, have been for the past 10 years. I have taken a look at their improvements. Besides the fact that not only will this improvement be an enhancement to the community, I also feel that in regards to precedents, this will be actually in something for a project for other homeowners to look to in order to make improvements. I think the improvements are, that they are suggesting are actually valuable and something to look at. I also think that the Walshes are amazing, are great citizens, and they have followed every single requirement that the city has asked them so far. And I would hope that the city would look at that and grant them this... And I would hope that the city would look at that and grant them this improvement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Richard Wagner followed by Victoria Monina followed by Ed Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Richard Wagner, I'm a resident of Camarillo. I'm the golf course superintendent at North Ranch Country Club. My wife and family would insist I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, as much time as I spend here. I don't know the Walshes, never met them. However, I do see their property every day from the golf course and it needs to be improved. It is a wash area for pool drainage in that area of the corner. I heard a statement earlier that golf course put up fences to keep wildlife out and people off the property. That's untrue. North Ranch has not put up a fence, only homeowners. The second thing, or the last thing I'd like to say is that the wildlife has no effect on wildlife. Fences don't keep wildlife out. They find their way in. In fact, we've had residents along the property ask us to get rid of the coyotes because there are coyotes on the golf course. So that's all I have to say. Approve the Walshes' property.
And thank you. Victoria Monina followed by Ed Jones followed by Joseph Conley.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Monina and I'm at Westlake Village for twenty years now and I know the Walshes for five years. This is one of the nicest families I ever met. And everything this Walsh does is always to improve and has, you know, the property looks so beautiful. And like other people say, it's not only for her four children that I adore the four children, but the other children. The house is open to all the children. They come there and they have such a good time always. And me being a Holocaust survivor and deny all that luxury, I love to see children, to have that, not to be denied by this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being down. Ed Jones followed by Joseph Conley followed by Michelle Deutsch. And for the record, Mr. Jones, past council member and supervisor for Ventura County. Welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I, I must say that I'm not going to reiterate what has been said before. I've sent you a letter. I was going to read just a couple excerpts from it. I know you've received letters from Greg Davis, the general manager of the golf course, from some of the board members and also Rich Wagner, the greenskeeper. They're all in favor of this project. It does contain a cistern that would stop the runoff and help a difficult problem that the golf course has. I'd like to take issue with John Prescott as someone who was here and actually signed the general plan when it was originally approved. And the next year, I also voted and to approve the hillside ordinance. And I must say, in retrospect, going back nearly forty years, if I had thought the hillside ordinance was going to be used to prevent someone from putting in a side yard playfield for their children that could not be seen from anywhere, I would think I would have had second thoughts maybe about voting for it. The hillside ordinance came, I'm sure John remembers, as a result of a tract known as Kevington, which is located above Meadow School. All those steep streets, Saprow, Wilder, Lamont, one's named for astronauts Carpenter and Grisham way up at the top of the hill. Horrendous cuts were made, vertical cuts in the side of the hill. Andy, I think you probably remember that, that were eyesore to the whole Caneo Valley could see that. And that was the impetus for the hillside ordinance and that's why we approved it. And I really think this is not a proper application of the hillside ordinance. And I would just like to say in conclusion, I see the yellow lights on. I'd just like to read the last paragraph of my letter. "The Walshes would respectfully request, had you allowed the project." All the neighbors are for it, the golfers, the general manager of the club. "The project would include a cistern that would eliminate a serious water runoff problem." The only ones we have ever found that would, are opposed to this are John and his staff and we believe incorrectly so. "In the final analysis, this is a reasonable request of a decent family for a play area for their four children." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, fellow in the council people. I look back about fifteen years...
Pardon, Mr. Conley. For the record, would you give us your name and community of residence?
I look back about fifteen years ago when I drove by a little handmade...
Mr. Conley, I hate to interrupt you, but we need your name and your county of residence.
Oh, sure. My name is Joe Conley and I live here in Thousand Oaks and I belong to North Ranch Country Club.
Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
About fifteen or sixteen years ago, I can remember driving down the street where the Walshes' house is on and I saw a little handmade sign for sale. And I got out of the car, looked at the lot and it didn't look very buildable to me. And then later that day, when I was playing golf, I went by and looked at it and God, it's ugly looking up there and it's terrible. Anybody who buys this place is ought to have their head examined. But then it happened. Suddenly I saw a home being built there. And it took them about two and a half years to build that gorgeous-looking home. And finally, when it was completed, they put in the landscaping. Beautiful trees, landscaping that must have cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, made it a gorgeous place to look up from. I now understand that there is an argument between having children play in a play yard and having coyotes run through the yard. Are we voting for coyotes or are we voting for children? I am completely in support of the Walshes attempting to put a nice play yard for the children there and the coyotes will keep coming around. I don't think you have to put up signs saying, "You're welcome here." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Michelle Deutsch. And my apologies if I butchered your name. Please correct me and give me your community of residence.
Hi, I'm Michelle Deutsch. Is that it correctly? And I live in Westlake Village and I live directly next door to the Walshes on the east side, not the west side. And my husband unfortunately isn't able to be here, but we talked about it for quite some years now with everything that's been going on with them. And we do approve of everything that they've asked of you guys. And we, we hope they get approved this time. Everything that they've touched, everything that they do, everything that they've built, everything that they have is meticulously maintained and beautiful and lovely. And we hope they can finish this job that they have. And I appreciate you listening to my opinion. Thank you.
And thank you for being down. That is the end of our public comment cards. Our comment cards. We'll return to staff for response or further comments. Mr. Prescott, Mr. Moon, whichever.
I'll just make a few comments and then others may comment as well. Mr. Sellers made a point that the second planning commission hearing, the debate was really about whether to deny with or without prejudice. The difference being that if a project is denied without prejudice, a revised application or a similar application actually can be filed with no time constraint. If it's denied with prejudice, it just means they can't file it for six months. And the planning commission did deny it without prejudice the first time around with the thinking that they would entertain a revised project. And the Walshes did submit a revised project, but that really didn't deal with the majority of the issues that concerned the planning commission, which were principally related to the twenty-five percent slope encroachment, the degree of it. I think in my earlier comments, I hopefully demonstrated that the city and city staff do not have a quote, "blind allegiance" to a twenty-five percent slope rule, if you will. Cases are individual and we have indicated on a number of occasions, we have actually recommended approval of a twenty-five percent slope encroachment. I think a distinction here is that when this particular project, the tract thirty-five-oh-seven was approved back in nineteen eighty, there were certain areas that were determined to be developable and others that weren't. And whatever minor encroachments in the twenty-five percent slope were necessary to accomplish the original development, those were granted at that time. Another comment I heard, I think one person testified that previously the planning commission approved a house here. That's not correct. The developer back in nineteen eighty did propose a house on this, on this site. The planning commission actually deleted that. The developer appealed it to the city council and the city council upheld the planning commission and decided this area should be open space. So it's never been the city's policy by any planning commissioner, any city council that there would be a house on the restricted use area portion of this lot. When we look at cases where, and it happens from time to time and it's unfortunate, where somebody proceeds without the required permits from the city, in this case, no oak tree permit, no grading permit, no building permits for the retaining walls. When we look at the, and the city's practice has been to allow people to file entitlement applications, they can rectify those rather than immediately requiring the removal of the improvements. And that's the process we're going through tonight. When we evaluate those cases, we evaluate them on their merits, not whether or not somebody did something wrong. And those are the only question or only, only comments I have.
There, I only would like to respond to basically one comment that was made by Mr. Mark Sellers, who represents the applicant. And I think we've heard testimony that he was surprised that we prepared an EIR for this play yard. And I'd like to just clarify that a little bit further. As I indicated, I worked on the environmental impact report for tract thirty-five-oh-seven. The reason why we're preparing a supplement to that EIR is that when we did the environmental impact analysis for that subdivision, we eliminated areas that were considered to be environmentally sensitive. And this particular restricted use lot was one of those areas that was eliminated from consideration for development. And when we had a proposal to do something with this property, it basically looked at analyzing the impacts of the grading in retrospect, because the grading had already occurred, we, we were actually compelled to prepare a supplement to the EIR. We just had no latitude whatsoever to prepare any other kind of document. The impacts had occurred and we had to find a way to recommend how to mitigate those impacts. So that's why you have a supplement before you this evening.
Are there any more statements from staff? None? Okay, questions to staff and his building opinion?
Thank you. I have a question. The, the sports court is still proposed tonight?
Yes, the upper pad area would consist of a sports court.
A sports court, okay. And the walls are still exceeding six feet in height?
The walls that are exceeding, exceeding six feet in height would be the pad expansion toward the rear deck area with stairs.
Okay. And prior to the disturbance, how many square feet of play area or, or area that could have been used as a play area was there? And I'm talking about the flat, the slopes usually don't lend themselves to a play area.
Well, the, the house design consists of approximately about six thousand square foot of flat area. That would be the manufactured, consists of the rear yard and the side yard area.
Okay. And the side yard, I'm looking at some of the numbers and it says anywhere from about nine thousand to fifteen thousand square feet in two thousand and seven.
Would I be to reduce pad from the nine thousand six hundred seventeen to sixty-three hundred square feet? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, that is a number eleven. I'm looking at the play area or combined pad area. What, what is the amount, the square footage of, of a, of the pad that would lend itself to, for a reasonable play area? Is it, is it nine thousand six hundred or is it fifteen thousand two hundred? Because the numbers have changed between then and now, obviously.
Right. The existing, I'm permitting the grading area consists of approximately about fifteen thousand square feet. The new proposed from the applicant would be a reduction of about three thousand, thirty-three hundred, reducing it from, actually the existing pad from nine thousand six hundred seventeen to sixty-three hundred combined.
Okay. Because I'm looking at the, at the two aerials. One was taken in oh-seven and oh-five and the other one in oh-seven. And the oh-five aerial shows that, shows as though there would have been approximately ten thousand square feet of usable play area. Looking at the aerial photo of the project location only.
Would this be in the left side yard area that currently, from the aerial photo, if it's showing that the undeveloped area?
The undeveloped area, correct.
Well, it's mostly over twenty-five percent slope. And I think it added up to around a half an acre.
Okay. So the total play area would be nine thousand six hundred, approximately is what you said. Why, why is that a difficult question? I don't understand.
The, on the left, the restricted use area over twenty-five percent slope, staff did not consider that as a play area. The usable rear yard area calculated was six thousand square feet was for the rear yard developed area, including the swimming pool. Staff did not consider the play area as...
I'm talking just about, I'm just, I'm talking about the side yard, the restricted use area that is in question tonight. I'm not talking about anything else on the property. So six thousand square feet?
Well, what we have now, I mean, from a standpoint of what's allowed or what's permitted, it would be all natural and it's mostly steeper than twenty-five percent slope. And I believe, as I stated, that the, the area of that restricted use area is roughly how many square feet? It's quite large, thirty-six thousand square feet. Their original proposal was to extend the pads out there, I think ninety-six hundred square feet for one and, no, is it a total of ninety-six hundred? Which would be the flat area. And then now they're proposing to reduce that to sixty-three hundred square feet.
The pad is, yeah, the pad is, is not that large, but it's approximately sixty-three hundred.
Right, but it includes slopes and other disturbances. Right now, as we state on page thirty-six of the report, fifteen thousand, almost fifteen thousand three hundred square feet of that restricted use area has already been disturbed. So now if you, when you use the term play area, do you mean level? So now, if you, when you use the term "play area," do you mean level, ground?
Level play area, certainly you can play in 25% terrain, but level play area would be...
Yeah, right now, there's probably very little of that.
Not necessarily baseball. I'm talking just about activity, recreational activity or so. So 6,300 approximately.
If you're talking just level area as opposed to disturbed area, then the, what they're proposing is 6,300 square feet of level area within a total of 11,000 disturbed area? Yeah, 11,500 roughly.
And that level area was what size prior to the disturbance?
Well, very small, if any, because it's in the restricted-use area, which was 25% slope. Yeah, less than 10% of it.
Okay.
And that would not have been a contiguous area?
There are 15 other parcels with the same restriction?
Within the Lakeview Canyon Road, there'll be five lots.
Five lots?
Five lots would have a restricted-use area with over 25% slope.
Okay, so there are five lots with that restriction?
And that's really in pretty much the immediate neighborhood. We didn't, we don't have the numbers for the entire track, but I'm sure it'd be more than that.
Are you aware of any other lots in the neighborhood that were allowed improvements into 25% terrain?
There has been a few, but never combined natural slope over 25% with the restricted-use area, not for the purpose of recreational use. For the purpose of building a new home, the city has approved for that purpose, but never at this massive amount. Staff can get one case where they're all less than 750 square feet of area that's disturbed.
Okay, so theoretically speaking, if this were to be approved tonight, how many other lots are there that could basically file similar applications to the City Council? Or to staff, not even the City Council, to staff?
Well, any encroachment in 25% slope has to at least go to the Planning Commission. Staff doesn't have any authority to approve any even minor encroachments. And it's really not possible to predict that. There are many areas of town, as I indicated earlier, and a lot of the hillside areas, where when the original project was approved, there was a grading plan, and that grading plan adhered to the 25% slope limits. Now those properties are subdivided, they're individual owners, and their property may include land over 25% slope. One reason we have that probably a little more than we used to is that we require the brush clearance areas to be within private property now. In some tracks, we're able to get that in an HOA lot, but if there is no HOA, then the individual lots include that. And a lot of times, that's steeper land. I think it's probably a little more common to have uphill slopes above 25% slope than downhill slopes, which is what we have here. But, you know, we really don't have an answer to that as to how many people would, where it would actually benefit them and where they would be willing to spend the money to do those improvements, because it's not necessarily cheap to grade in that kind of land, and then file an application with the city.
And is this an RPD or is this an HPD? Reference was made tonight that this was HPD?
It's in the RPD zone, residential plan development. However, the city's hillside policies, which are embodied in the general plan as well as the hillside ordinance, HPD ordinance, apply wherever there's hillside terrain, no matter what the zone is.
And the court, to your knowledge, is a basketball court or tennis court, or what sort of court is it?
It specifies just play court. Staff does not have any more information on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of questions of staff. We need to go back to Mr. Sellers for rebuttal, unless you have a question, Dr. Gillette?
No, as a matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I'll withdraw until we conclude the rebuttal and staff and council discussion, but I'm...
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Mr. Sellers, you've got five minutes to make final comments and rebut.
Thank you. First, there's about 25...
Please restate your name.
Mark Sellers, Jackson Demarcow Firm, resident of Thousand Oaks. First, there's about 2,500 square feet of flat area right now that you can use to throw a ball or for any activities for the kids. Unfortunately, that's right around the pool, and it's hardscape. With my son, I know if you play around the pool, an unfortunate thing happens, is the ball ends up in the pool. That's not a lot of fun. Two, if you want to make the diving catch for the touchdown, it's not a lot of fun to do that on hardscape. So the goal here is basically to have some turf area where they can have some active sports with the dad and the children, the mom and the children, and not be right around the pool. And the, as staff indicates, the rest of the property is at 25% slope, so that's why we're here tonight. Talking about the supplemental EIR, it's been done, it's now a practice, and I think that will discourage anyone else from coming in here and trying to say, "Well, let's do the same thing with the restricted-use area." That costs thousands of dollars for the Walsh. I'm very surprised they've carried through with this project. It's not something that is going to encourage a lot of applicants to do what they're doing. And that gets to what I think is the main issue that Mr. Jones talked about, and that's visual impact, the basic underpinning of the 25% slope criteria. There is no, and everybody agrees, there is no visual impact for this particular site. And that makes it different from these other sites we've talked about. And finally, I think that the fact that there's no opposition, and there's been such an outpouring of support for this project, to me sends a message. And that message is that this intrusion into the 25% slope area is harmless, it's reasonable, and it's not going to be undermining any of the principles that have been so beneficial to this community in the past. And with that, I can respond to any questions.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Sellers?
There are a lot of cards in the audience. I understand that were handed in supports.
I am going to talk about that. Thank you for reminding me. No further questions? Good, we'll close the public hearing, and I will mention that there were 14 statement cards, written statement cards, all in favor of the project. Okay, Dr. Gillette, you said you had a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Get our discussion started here. First of all, I want to, I want to comment on the quality of 45 years of stewardship by the planning components of this city. As we all know, we just recently received the 2009 Attitude Survey, and over 96% of the respondent in this scientifically-controlled document expressed their satisfaction with the community, not the least of which is the time, effort, energy that the planning, professional planning staff, that our predecessors have both elected and appointed, the care that's been given to maintaining the quality of this community and its aesthetic appearance. And so with that thought in mind, I'm particularly struck by the attitude that all of the neighbors that came in support of this yard improvement project, which indicates a lack of any adverse impact, and I believe it's, I believe it's a reasonable use of the Walshes' property. My comments will be, I'm going to try and make them in such a way that they can establish findings that can be used to justify the comments. Again, the Planning Commission did not find the project was poorly designed, only worried about precedent. City Council's role is to carefully evaluate each case on its own merit, and I can't emphasize strongly enough, logic and reason. With regards to the use of the 25-slope area or use of the restricted area, one finding would be recommended that granting the appeal is justified for the following reasons. Regarding staff's concern over overdevelopment, as I stated previously, we're not talking about new buildings, just landscaping and a small play area in a yard of an existing home for a family's children due to their location of the home on a busy street, blind curve, no sidewalks, and no other flat area for a play yard on this lot. Quality of the Walsh home and landscaping is at such a high level, yard improvements clearly enhance the appearance of the site. It is now annually disturbed as a brush clearance area, not a case of unsightly development of the property. With regard to staff's concern about preservation, the site's natural terrain, a finding would be recommended, this is not a pristine, untouched natural area. Right next to the house, annually disturbed, are weed whack brush clearance area. Due to lower elevation and topography, the site is hidden, not in a public vista, no undesirable visual impact. It's only seen from the golf course, which we heard comments from elements, from the representation from the golf course approving the site, supporting the site. Next to a major public street, it's a site of past dumping, location of stormwater outlet, not part or adjoining large untouched natural open space area that the city needs to preserve. The homeowners association that I'm aware of did not even want the property as common area since it was so small and non-beneficial, so the land went to the Walshes' lot and their maintenance and tax obligation. Still open space, any wildlife, I believe, can access this area across and across the golf course. Significant portion of the lot will remain restricted. Precedent cannot be a major concern. It goes back to that, this site at this time. Most other lots, restricted-use area on an exposed uphill slope with actual public visual impacts, may not justify an encroachment. The benefit resolves ongoing water runoff problem for the golf course. The city can't expect this owner to fix a problem they didn't cause. The Walshes suffered enough force to pay for the supplemental EIR for merely a play court, and went through two Planning Commission hearings after the Commission told them if the project was reduced, they believed that it would be approved. Based on these factors, I could even support the original project as a natural extension of their yard and a useful part of their home. I move to support the appeal and would allow, if they so chose, the applicant to complete the project as originally proposed. And I would like to verify both, we heard it from the appellant and from staff, that there apparently are no questions related to the 36 conditions which are included in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gillette. Comments on the motion?
That was the motion.
Right. I got you. Comments? I was going to start at this end, since I've been accused of ignoring you. Okay. Okay. Mr. Bill D'Elipena?
I have a question, Mr. Gillette, regarding your motion. When you say you're approving the project or approving the appeal based on the original design, is that the design that was brought before the last two planning...
What I said, no, no. What I said was, if they chose, but I, and I specifically added that in, what I said is that I would approve the appeal. But if they, if they so chose, I would, I would be inclined to listen to an appeal on the original project.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much.
As long as you're talking, you have comments on the motion?
Really, what, I will, I will support the motion now that you have clarified it. I wanted to state that I was invited to the site several times. I got a call from Mr. Walsh, I got a call from Mr. Jones, and I decided not to view the property. And it is not always necessary to view a property in order to make up your mind. There are plenty of maps, there are pictures, there are descriptions, so there is no need to really see the site, in my opinion, not in every case, and definitely not in this case. I didn't really see the need to do that. So I just wanted to get that out. And I am approving this, although begrudgingly, because I know that perhaps this will be the trigger for other projects, and I will really ask that all the other property owners who have plans to improve the restricted-use area, please go through your HOA, make sure that everything is okay with them. Certainly, we don't want to have a repeat of having all of this come before the City Council once again. These things can be done going through the proper channels. And I realize that HOAs in California, in California have a weakened authority, unfortunately, and many HOAs do rely on the municipalities to fight cases for them. And in this case, that is what appears to be happening. I certainly don't want to deny anyone their right to improve their property at all. And nonetheless, whether you didn't see any benefit in leaving the property as is and enjoying the natural open space versus to improve it, that is beauties in the eye of the beholder. You can do with your property whatever you want, but there are certain laws. And my vote tonight is a very reluctant vote, and I really, again, urge other property owners who will have plans or might have plans to go through the proper channels first. I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Comments?
I think Mr. Gillette covered most of the items. The only thing I would add is, I was looking here through the conditions, maybe staff can clarify. Do we have a condition that basically requires if, if any of the oak trees should die as a result of the grading, setting aside whether it was approved or not, that the Walshes would be required to replace the oak trees? It's my understanding there's some dispute on whether the trees are damaged or not. I don't know, we're going to know, but we'll know in a couple of years, four, five years down the road.
Well, we do have the on-site maintenance conditions, so that requires them to maintain all the oak trees. And there is a cross-reference to our oak tree preservation resolution, which does require replacement for any trees that fail.
Right, so staff satisfied that if there is trees that do die as a result of the, of the construction, they'll be required to replace them?
Yeah.
By condition?
That's right.
All right. Yeah, to me, this is really a classic case of private property rights. And, you know, and I want to point out, I think Mr. Gillette talked about it, but our ordinance actually provides for grading in a 25% slope area. It just requires Planning Commission approval. We don't have a rule in the city that says you can't do it. We just have provisions for when you can. And if there was ever, ever, an instance where this would be warranted, it's this particular location. I really do concur with some of the residents that came down. You really do have to see this property to get an appreciation for what this particular applicant is trying to do. It's a, it's a play yard adjacent to a home in an area that really has no other play area, and can't be viewed by anyone, anyone other than somebody on the golf course. We have testimony tonight that certainly supports that the adjacent homeowners, even though they can't see it, and the golf course folks, all of them are in support of this project. So I can't see really any rational basis not to support this appeal. And I would say, and I would concur with Mr. Gillette, while it's not in front of us, if you looked at the property, you would be hard-pressed not to approve the original application for improvement of the entire area, because it really does, it really does, I think, add value and makes improvements in a lot of other areas. So I'm certain... So I'm certainly going to support the appeal.
Yes. Ms. Irwin?
I have just a couple of comments to make. Obviously, we want to make very clear that there was a mistake made upfront, that if you are doing work on your property, you have to get permits ahead of time, and so we wouldn't want to encourage other homeowners to not go through the proper channels to get work approved and then have to ask for permission after. I think that if you look at the property, common sense would dictate that what you are planning to do with the second project is going to be, I think, a big improvement, especially with the drainage and the problems with, that the golf course is facing right now. The other thing that I, that really, I feel very uncomfortable with is that, I really think the Walshes heard what the planning commission said the first time, and I think it's really kind of, it was a good faith, I mean, they followed through, put together new plans that were reduced in size and spent an awful lot of money, and so it's very difficult for me to really see the justification that the second time the planning commission turned it down. Now, I wasn't there, I didn't hear. If there were really concerns, there seems to be some difference of opinion the first time that it would be precedent setting. So, like I said, an improvement, and I'll support the motion.
Thank you. There's really nothing further I can add, so make way for the motion. Final comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick ones. I wanted to thank the neighbors that took the time out of their busy schedules to come down and support this. Again, it speaks to quality of life in this community. And I would say individually, I believe it was Mrs. Lalo that started out and kind of set the stage, if she's still here, congratulations, that kind of summed it up, gave us a good place to launch into this. With that being said, I would also like to attach to the motion, or include in the motion to make sure that we, the motion specifies to approve the supplemental EIR 166 and should impose the conditions, those would be the 36 conditions that I referenced that are in the report, attached to the April 27, 2009 Planning Commission staff report.
Okay, please vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's reconvene our hearing tonight, and would the city clerk please open 8B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, agenda item 8B. Signs warning of the risk of consuming alcohol and energy drinks. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. We have one speaker card, and the speaker will be allowed five minutes.
Thank you very much. Presentation is going to be by Captain Randy Pennis. Welcome back to Canoe Valley, Thousand Oaks. Nice to see your shining face.
Thank you.
You got it.
Mayor, council, this issue is not a new issue for the city or for council. You've been very progressive the past couple of years in making our community safe, specifically our youth. Energy drinks themselves are not new either. They started in 1995, and if you remember, Pepsi came out with Jolt, and sales for energy drinks at that time were about a million dollars annually. Now, there's over 500 types of energy drinks, energy drinks with alcohol in them, and the business is about $7 billion a year. The danger that we have, and Sergeant Aguilar will be handing you a couple, you'll see how they're marketed. They're marketed towards our youth, and you can see up here, some have alcohol, some don't. This one particular one that says juice, 9.9 percent alcohol, you can see, as they're marketed, very similar style cans, and look to see what has alcohol and what doesn't. Since our approach on keeping our youth safe and our education, we've approached this issue with, in two ways, with enforcement and the education. The enforcement has been stings, targeting home parties with our social host ordinance, and targeting areas where juveniles are gathering and drinking outside of the home party setting. Our education has been outreach to PTAs, the Canoe Valley Unified School District, all the sports teams in Thousand Oaks, Little League, AYSO, talking about the dangers of both of these products. We also have had workshops over the years, and as recently as October of this year, educating the on-sale and the off-sale businesses to tell them why we want this signage. Because on top of this, besides serving these in on-sale and off-sale, when kids buy these, they also mix them with many over-the-counter cold remedies that we have, Nyquil, Theraplu, prescription cough medicine, doing shots with energy drinks and these. And basically, when you have the stimulants of an energy drink, and your body is going and going, and then you ingest the depressant into your system, your system's battling both that depressant and stimulant, and the problems that have happened with our youth is they feel up, up, up from the energy drink, and they don't realize that they're impaired from the depressant, from the impact of the alcohol. For example, if you look at this juice, this 9.9 percent alcohol, that is about eight cups of coffee and about four beers. So you can imagine the impact on your body and a young person ingesting that. We see this signage as basically another layer of protection, besides the enforcement arm, our educational arm, that we continue to do the outreach with. And I'll read what the sign says, and Sergeant Aguilar will talk about the placement of it in just a moment. But it says, "Warning: Consuming energy drinks that contain or mix with alcohol may mask the signs of impairment and increase your risks of injury." And I also want to thank our city attorney for their support on this, and the correct verbiage of this sign, and our education for the businesses. And I also want to add that the businesses in Thousand Oaks have been very supportive of this, not only most recently with our education, but since 2007. Sergeant?
As far as the display of the signs that'll be put into the retailer stores, there'll be three different situations where that can take place. One of those is where the sale or dispensing of the alcohol energy drinks to the public is primarily intended for the consumption off the premises, which is your retail stores. And at least one sign will have to be placed at all locations in the store where the alcoholic beverages, AEDs, and the energy drinks are displayed for purchase. And this could be where the beer or drink coolers are, or at a separate display area where the drinks are being sold inside the retail store. The second place where the warning sign would need to be displayed is for over-the-counter service, at least one sign needs to be placed and readable from all counter locations where the drinks are available to the public. And the third place, which is the on-sale, selling of the alcohol energy drinks, would be a display where there will be people who have the energy drinks ordered at tables, serviced at restaurants, at one sign, at least one sign shall be placed to ensure it's readable by the public who enters the premises as well.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much for that presentation, and at this time, before we open it to questions, I want to thank Captain Pennis for his tremendous effort in driving this and getting the social host ordinance moving right along and passed by and approved by our similar ordinances in all counties, in Ventura County, eagerly assisted by Sergeant Aguilar. So, gentlemen, thank you so very much. And while I'm passing out thank yous, I want to thank Councilwoman Irwin, because she really brought this to the city, and at her insistence and constant urging, it got through, so thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Albano?
Thank you. I also don't want us to ignore the behavioral health with the county and Dan Hicks, who we've worked hand-in-hand with and who has graciously agreed and has been working with us on what the signs would look like, and is going to work with the retailers and restaurants and bars that have to provide the signs, to be able to provide those signs for them, so that this whole process, once the ordinance is adopted, will be a very easy transition. Thank you.
And thank you for adding that. Okay, questions of our presenters? Yes, Ms. Bill, your opinion?
Just a quick question. Obviously, the jurisdiction falls under the Attorney General's office in various states, the 13 states where they have taken action against these drinks, not only Thousand Oaks. Is there the, is the FDA, can the FDA play any role at all in this? Or do we have to rely on the manufacturers to voluntarily stop making those products?
Well, I was going to say, you know, the reason the Attorney Generals from different states took a stand is because the federal government was not doing anything. So, and we've even had problems at state level getting certain rules, and I think probably Captain Pennis could speak more eloquently to the issues over how we categorize these, whether they're hard liquor or not hard liquor. And so I think one of the big things was getting two of the major manufacturers to pull theirs and not continue to make the alcohol and energy drinks together. But, so it's really, for us, it's, this is probably one of the first times the locality's actually taking some kind of action. It's not, again, to stop the selling of either product, but just to make sure that people have a good educational background when they're choosing to drink them. Excellent. Thank you.
And further, just with that, when they're marketed at our stores, and we've contacted all the large manufacturers, all the large stores, Albertsons, corporate headquarters of Vons, Ralphs, Albertsons, as I've said, because when people would go into markets, and you can see these two up here, one has alcohol, one does not, and at one point, they had an eye level, and they're marketing in a way towards our young people, and we take the approach of education so they know what their kids are drinking. You could have, and this has happened in Thousand Oaks, where a young person is drinking one at home, and their parents didn't know that they sold them with alcohol. They could be on our campuses, our high school campuses, so we want as many people educated as possible, and again, that's the layer of protection with the signage.
Very good.
Further questions? Ms. Irwin?
I want to thank also Captain Pennis for coming back, and Mr. Aguilar, and this is, and the city attorneys did a great job in behavioral health. And just to reiterate, the reason that this is very, very important to do is because the federal government and the state government have completely dropped the ball, and so if we want to start making a difference in some of these methods that the alcohol companies are using to market to our young, we have to do it at a local level, and hopefully, we can get the ball rolling. We're one of the first, as Ms. Albano said, one of the first localities to do this, and we have a number of other cities that are waiting until we pass this ordinance tonight, and they are going to just copy it from us, and that's what we really want to see, and we want to eventually put pressure on the state and federal government to regulate these drinks appropriately. And as Ms. Albano said, I think warning signs are really appropriate, but, you know, what we really, what I would really hope is that some of these mom-and-pop stores and the grocery stores really realize what the danger of these drinks are and stop selling them, because especially with the drinks that already have the alcohol in them, kids don't know how much caffeine and how much alcohol is in there, and it's a very, very dangerous combination. So, there was no question, that was a comment.
Thank you for acknowledging that. Any questions? None. Gentlemen, thank you again very, very much. And when we get back to you in just a couple of minutes, we have one speaker, Mr. Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway? Good evening again.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy. Nick Kidway, resident of Noguera Park, director of Concerns for the 1,000 Oaks. I, of course, look forward to this ordinance, and I think, I want to thank council people and staff for working on it. However, I have concerns, and it makes me wonder, when there are so other important burning issues in the city, why we would be taking a lead on something like this, as if you folks had nothing to do. I know we've heard about Congress voting on the National Health Bill and saying openly that they would not read the 1,000 pages. It looks like you folks don't read your packets also. I mean, if you go to page 107, section 52703, it's unbelievable that even after the hearing, nobody has pointed this out, that it says, "Duty to post, veining signs, veining." I mean, so I mean, when you don't have your house in order, when you cannot even type these things properly, it makes you wonder, what is the ulterior motivation? Because this council has a history of knocking Ventura, knocking Sacramento, knocking Washington, DC, when their own house lacks a lot. I was for over 10 years on CSAPA, which stood for Canoe Substance Abuse Authority, when this, it was established in the 80s by Matt Schaefer and Mr. Jones, et cetera. A lot of the people didn't want to do it, because they said, "We don't really have a drug issue in our community." How wrong that was. And then we were dismissed from CSAPA, and never even given a thank you note for our service for 10-plus years, some were there less, some were more, and basically, we were kicked out because tobacco money became available. That was the reason that I found out, and that's why Board of Supervisors and other people put in their own people so that they could divert that hundreds, the hundreds of thousands of dollars that came. And then finally, I don't know, if the money dried up or whatever, but the whole organization was stocked up. It's not that difficult to craft an ordinance, in my opinion, and it's wonderful that I get a chance to speak after that long and wonderful hearing that we just concluded on, and to have Mr. Jones speak up, that it was never his intention as to what was being done with his ordinance that he helped craft 40 years ago. And so, some of these ordinances seem to be nice, I mean, they feel good, they put good bullet points on resumes for having done something like this, when there are so many important tax issues, so many issues that affect people. So I just wanted to put that into the record, even though I support the ordinance, and I'm glad that, and I would want to again say, the citizens of this community owe a debt of gratitude to Captain Pennis for his long service and extra hard work and dedication. In closing, I would just like a simple question, because most of these drinks I do not recognize, but this Red Bull, I see that a lot, and if Captain Pennis can describe the negative effects of it, if there are any, which I think there are-- there are, I think that would be a good thing to elaborate. I don't know if it was done, because I did come to the meeting just a little bit late. Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank, good luck to you in getting this ordinance passed.
Thank you, Ms. Kidway. Back to Captain Pennis. Perhaps you can respond to the Red Bull question, or anything else you want to say.
Most of these drinks that don't have alcohol in them have what's called an energy blend. A lot of times, most often, it's 2,500 milligrams per serving, that's eight ounces, and generally these are eight, or excuse me, 16. So that's 5,000 milligrams. And within that, high sugar content, high caffeine, but besides the caffeine, a normal cup of coffee, Starbucks cup of coffee, could be about 85 milligrams of caffeine. With these, you have 200 milligrams, but then you have guarana, which is a natural caffeine, you have other stimulants in there, in the energy blend. And this speaks for not only the, the energy drinks, but Red Bull, the dangers of these, besides the health issue, the dangers of these is the combination of alcohol, doing shots of these, the stimulant and depressant, the presence that I talked about earlier. And this is, this is a life-saving measure. And that's why, again, the science is so important, but that's basically what the ingredients of these are, high sugar, high caffeine content, mixed with alcohol.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Captain Pennis or Sergeant Aguilar? None? Gentlemen, thank you again. We'll close the public hearing and entertain a discussion and motion. Councilwoman Irwin?
Thank you. And I would like to move the staff recommendation, ordinance be read in title only, further reading be waived, and if no objection, introduced. And thanks to Mr. Kidway, I would like to also remind staff to change section 5 dash 27.03, duty to post warning signs.
Comments to the motion? You know, I have one comment. We're somewhat admonished for spending perhaps undue time and attention to a matter such as this, relegating its importance against other things that we consider in this city. Well, I have to say that there's very little more important than our children and their safety, keeping them alive, keeping them off drugs, or minimizing their exposure. And I will also agree that questions involving taxes and finances are extremely important. But unfortunately, a bulk of the control of those issues deal with our gentlemen and women in Sacramento, so we're not in much control of that. With that, I gladly support the motion. Make or the motion, final comment? None, please vote.
The motion carries 5-0, and the ordinance title is an ordinance adding chapter 27 to title 5 regarding signs warning of risk of consuming alcohol and energy drinks.
Thank you very much. And would you please announce 8C?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8C, municipal code amendment to adopt tree pruning ordinance and modify current standards for parking area landscape, MCA 2008-70471. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this hearing, and we have one speaker that will be allowed five minutes.
Well, thank you very much, and I'd point out that there is a memo on the supplemental, on a revised ordinance. Ms. Ware, you're presenting.
Thank you very much. I'll also, real briefly, good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight before you is MCA 2008-70471 to establish tree pruning guidelines and making minor changes to the city's landscape standards for parking lots. In your supplemental pack this evening is a memo regarding this item notifying the council a minor change in the ordinance has been made relative to the municipal code section numbering due to a conflict with this previous municipal code amendment you just heard. Just for clarification, this ordinance will be added as proposed to chapter 28 of title 5, not chapter 27. In early 2008, the city manager directed the community development department staff to form a task force to study issues related to the city's standards for landscape maintenance and related issues. The community development department formed Landscape Maintenance Guidelines Task Force. This task force was comprised of landscape professionals and representatives of property ownership and property managers, along with city staff members. The members participating in the task force were Frank Anino, Thomas Cohen, James Dean, Ron Everett, Rick Lemo, Joaquin Lopez, Lee Newman, John Chichenian, and Dave Tuttle. I would like to publicly thank them for participating on the task force and providing their expertise in their individual areas that made this a very positive effort. The task force met from April through September 2008 and developed three recommendations to the city council. One, develop a tree pruning ordinance. Two, consolidate the city's landscape policies into a single document instead of varying policies in multiple documents. And three, probably the most important of the recommendations, to provide education for our community of the city's adopted regulations and policies. As resolved the recommendations of the task force, the city council initiated MCA 2008-70471, which is before you this evening. Staff did send public notifications to all our registered homeowners associations, as well as landscape professionals within the city, and I want to addition also, the Chamber of Commerce was ultimately aware of this. The tree pruning ordinance, the proposed tree pruning ordinance would apply, if adopted, only to development projects that, as part of their city approvals, have been required to plant trees subject to an approved landscape plan. This applies primarily to commercial, industrial, and institutional projects, as well as residential developments with landscape common areas or manufactured slopes which require specifically approved landscape plans, subject to the approval of the community development department. The ordinance basically does the following. It prohibits pruning greater than 25% of the foliage canopy of a tree unless otherwise approved by a permit. It prohibits tree topping or line tailing of branches, and it also prohibits the use of climbing spurs except under limited circumstances. The second part of the amendment is for parking lot landscaping. The proposed changes are almost all to clarify existing language or to remove procedural standards more appropriate for a resolution or internal processing instructions. One change in the city standards is to raise the allowable height and perimeter landscaping from two and a half to three feet, to provide consistency in other landscape standards already in the municipal code. As noted earlier, the community development staff will also be moving forward with the task force to other recommendations. Currently, staff is working on the consolidation of the city's landscape policies into a single resolution. This effort is also being combined with new State of California standards for water conservation. The proposed resolution is anticipated to be heard by the planning commission by the end of this year for recommendation back to the city council. Also, after the standards are adopted, an educational program will be developed for all interested parties so the city can proactively communicate adopted landscape regulations and standards to the community. Task force made it very clear that this is an extremely important component of their The planning commission's recommendation to the council is to approve this amendment. Staff also recommends the city council introduce MCA 2008-70471. Rick Lemo is present here this evening to talk on behalf of the landscape, as well as there's, I thought, two other members of our committee, I believe, may have cards in also. And staff is available for questions on here, and also George Moore, the city's landscape consultant, is also here for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. Questions of staff? Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you. Good evening. I have a question regarding the fees. Are the fees still included, and is any plan checking fees or any other associated fees?
Staff will come back if the, if the ordinance tonight is approved. Staff will come back with an appropriate resolution to adopt a fee for this. It's staff's anticipation that the permit for, for the pruning is going to be a, a simple permit for people to go through, not anything extensive, and the fee would be minimal, but we'll, we'll establish that after the ordinance has been adopted.
Will the fee be lower than what is currently in place?
There, there is currently no fee for this particular issue, because this is really a new adopted ordinance, so there is no, for, for this particular activity, there isn't a permit for this, so we will be developing one.
I was referring to plan checking fees, for example.
This wouldn't necessarily be a plan check in that respect. It will basically be someone coming to the city requesting to prune a tree more than 25%, and it won't be necessarily a plan check, it will be basically a written request, it will be evaluated by staff.
Any other requirements in, in association with our forestry plan?
Not for this amendment, no.
Not for this?
Correct.
Because I see that it was deleted from the old one, but it's not included in this. It was struck from the old version.
Maybe you can clarify what's from the old version of?
Okay.
The parking lot lands, the parking lot issues?
From the previous, oh, from the current ordinance, I should say, not from the previous ordinance.
Are you referring to the parking lot standard portion of the amendment?
Yes.
Oh, the parking lot, really, there's no real, the strike language is really, most of that's just been rewritten for clarification, there's really no change of policy or any deletions, other than really procedural issues, which are more appropriate for other documents. You know, we don't want, it wasn't so important, like, to, to ask how many plans were submitted, we're doing that within our process instructions, not necessarily by code.
And how is this particular amendment, proposed amendment, going to be more user-friendly, consumer-friendly?
Well, in respect to the tree pruning ordinance, the city's enforcement with pre, I'm sorry, with tree pruning was done more through policy, and there was a lot, it wasn't really accessible to the public, it wasn't in the code, we couldn't necessarily easily point to a person who had a question about it and said, this is the way we do it, here it is written. It was, it was buried deep in policy and procedures and, and references to other documents. In respect to the tree pruning ordinance, it was the committee's feeling that it needed to be clearly stated as a city policy and in the code, where, where the public, contractors, owners, all had a very good understanding where it is, they could read it themselves, it wasn't, it wasn't buried in documents that weren't really available to the public. And the benefit is, by having this ordinance, it is there in front of the public, we can point to it, the public can be aware of it, and, and it's easily, it's really easily read for them.
I have a question for Mr. Moore. Good evening, Mr. Moore. Do you have, did you have a chance to look at the proposed ordinance tonight?
Yes.
And will it make your job easier or more difficult?
Well, it's just to clarify some things that were in, either in conflict or, or a restating of something that, in a different language that's already in the ordinance, it'll, it'll be about the same. It won't make it any easier, but the tree pruning is a, is a really good issue, because it, it does clarify things for those, not so much for me, but it does clarify for the public, because I know what I want.
Very good. There is, there isn't anything that jumps out at you? You think it's pretty much the same, then?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's gonna be, it'll work much better for the public, they'll be able to read this and to understand what our policies already are in place.
Thank you.
Further questions of staff? Ms. Ware, did the whole group task force agree pretty much with this as is?
Yes, I believe so. The task force worked very well together, considering we had many people from very different viewpoints a lot of the time, but at least it's my belief, and maybe the task force members can speak probably a little to it better than I do, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I believe the task force worked very well, and, and this was, I think, a collective product of work from this task force and their recommendations to the council.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll go to our speakers on the issue. We have three. Dave Tuttle will be number one, followed by James Dean, followed by Rick Lemo. So, Mr. Tuttle?
Please state your name and city.
Good evening. David Tuttle, resident of War Park, property owner, business owner in Thousand Oaks. Good evening, members of council, Mr. Mayor. I want to first say I'm here to speak in favor of this ordinance, and I would like to thank Mr. Ware for his diligent effort in working with a diversified group, a lot of different ideas and different people, and can't say that we always agreed on everything that we, that came up, but at least ideas were presented and discussed in an open forum. I think the reason that this committee initially came about was for clarification, a clarification for what the rules are, so that they weren't so subjective, so that we were all aware, the members of the community, as well as members of the staff, as to what, what the rules were and how were they to be enforced. And the major issue that came out, the thing that was enlightening, was the need to educate the community. I remember walking across the street after one issue with Mr. Ware, and I looked across at the Mastro's Steakhouse, and I looked at him, and I said, can I, can we trim this tree? He says, I don't know. Said, how big is the, you know, the caliper, the trunk? So there are some issues. There are issues of the types of trees to be trimmed, how they can be pruned, whether it should be topped, visibility. There's always a tremendous amount of pressure which came up from businesses in the community for visibility, how many trees, you know, should the parking area and how many trees should be there. And there's always a kind of a battle going on between vendors and merchants and what, what are the rules are. And that's really, I think, the impetus or the reason this, this committee came about. I think the major thing that came out was, was that, to answer one of the council members' member, this simplifies the rules. It, it makes it easier for us all to understand, they're very subjective, and what may come out from one person's interpretation of, okay, this is how we're going to trim this tree. No, you can't do that, similar to what happened to these folks that were here earlier this evening. And that's what, what we're trying to preempt with this, with this new ordinance. Having said that, I'd like to step aside and say something out of my, my own opinion about another issue which relates to this. And that is that I believe, along with this ordinance, it, there is a need for the council to take a hard look at hiring its own staff member to oversee the work that's done in the city. I believe that a conflict exists and has existed for a long time, the way that additional staff are hired to oversee and do reports, and that's part of the confusion of what goes on. And I think that even though that there's a budget freeze on, there's consideration that there would be monies saved and, and trust gained from members of the community if there was a landscape architect certified on, on the, the city council, I mean, on the, on the staff, excuse me, retained to oversee issues that come up with tree pruning and enforcing tree pruning, and how the tree pruning is done, and the areas that it's in. I think there's a lot of confusion with that. Right, currently, we have a lot of diversified opinions that come in, and staff members who do reports, where other people in the community who are in the trades have to work with these people also, and they check each other's work. It's a conflict. And I brought it to the attention of the city before, previously, and I'd like them to take a hard look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tuttle, and thank you for being on the task force. Appreciate it. Mr. Dean, followed by Mr. Lemo.
James Dean, landscape architect, I didn't plan this, by the way. Hi, again. It was a pleasure to be involved in that. I've been with oak trees and with trees most of my career. Ed Jones, actually, later not, when he was a councilman, I came before him, and in a process of a man cutting down some silk oaks, which are not oak trees, I came as a young landscape architect, and I said, excuse me, those are not oak trees. And he turned around and counseled, and he says, we got an expert. And I thought, yeah. So I spent the rest of my life becoming an expert. I, I support this motion, I support this ordinance, particularly because as we, as a community begins to mature, so do the trees. And there's a, there's been a great lack of knowledge to the owners of land concerning the trees and what was required. For instance, very few people knew that, that sycamore trees were covered by a landmark ordinance. And so this is, again, the educational process. What came of this was it forced us all to look around and see what else was being done. I fortunately am the city arbiter for the city of Calabasas, and so I had kind of a personal issue in this. And it forced us to do a lot of research, and what came into this was the American National Standards, ANS 300 National Standards, A and S three hundred ordinance, or I should say, policy, that's American National Standards, had written data on this, and that's been adopted, I think, as one of the new sources of information, very clear sources of information. So I'm happy to support the motion. And I go way back, George, and I've kind of been doing this for forty years, George? On opposite sides of the counter, but it's been fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean, and thank you for serving on the task force. Mr. Lemo? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff. I don't think I was even born when Jimmy Dean first came here and started in trees. Just teasing, Jimmy. My name's Rick Lemo, and I'm from Newbury Park, and was very proud to serve on this task force. You know, one of the worst fears that is out there today is not just the fear of public speaking, but fear of government and fear of the process. And through an exemplary city staff and a process that they set up, I think what, one of the biggest things that's going to come out of the task force is to strip away some of that fear. This diverse task force spent many hours gaining an understanding of the issues relating to tree maintenance. But what was really great was the atmosphere that staff created. They were there to answer questions, but there was an atmosphere for open discussion, and it wasn't necessary for us to come to a consensus, but on most issues, we did. There were three main consensuses, if I'm saying that properly, of the committee. And the three areas were tree pruning, ordinance in the code, not buried in a bunch of secondary resolutions and documents, because that confusion was difficult for people to deal with, and they sometimes didn't find the right answers until it became a fire drill. Secondly, was a consolidation of policies from the many documents into a single document for better accessibility. We had a need for clear standards that were understandable and accessible, and that was one of the consensuses of the committee. Last is there was a huge emphasis on the need to educate our community so that people understand our regulations and our standards. And this, I believe, is something I've been sort of pushing for about fifteen years in town, and that is getting a clear set of rules, trying to strip away some of the policies and stick with, "What are the rules?" The number one complaint you hear when people come to City Hall is, "I just want to know what the rules are. Want to follow them, but I want to know what the rules are, and I want them to be less subjective and more consistent in the decision-making process." And so with that, I urge you to approve the ordinance, and would like to one more time thank staff for a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemo, and thank you for your participation in the task force. Back to staff, Mr. Ware, any following comments?
Really no comments, any other speakers, other than to point out that this is really the first step in this process. There will be a resolution coming back to council that's really going to enhance this a little more, particularly in the areas of the development guidelines for landscaping and maintenance and such as those. So this is really the first step of a process that will be continuing along with when we get it all done, as everyone spoke about, that the education is going to be very key in this, because developing all this stuff is really nice, but if no one knows about it, it's not really going to work real well. So the education will be a big part of it, once the council's made a final decision, particularly on the resolution side.
Questions to staff? Yeah, Ms. Irwin?
Yeah, well, first a comment. I'll make it really quick before you stop me. I also thank everybody that served on the committee. It's really important, I think, to have uniformity and understanding of the rules, and I think you guys really work through it, and we're lucky in this city to have so many arborists and landscapers and people really concerned about the trees in the city. The question is, where are we, are we going to be looking at a streamlining of the oak tree ordinance? I just had somebody comment on that today about, you know, if there's a dead branch, is there some easy way to take it off?
That ordinance, I believe, will be coming before council the first meeting in January. It'll be going to the planning commission next month.
And is that also being committee-driven? Do you have the same people?
We didn't form a formal committee, if you will, on that. Instead, we did an outreach to professionals in the field, all of the homeowners' associations in the city, Chamber of Commerce, people who had identified themselves as being interested in the issue, to get suggestions for improving the oak tree ordinance. The main tenor is to make it easier, less onerous for individual homeowners and small business, small businesses to deal with oak tree maintenance issues on their property, things like the dead branches.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gillette?
Was, I'm sorry, was there a motion? Did you?
No, we haven't closed the public hearing yet.
I'm sorry?
We haven't closed the public hearing yet.
Okay. I would like to, the speaker that referenced the appearance of conflict, the experience of conflict in the process, that it doesn't have to be done as part of the motion, but that for something like that, as important as something like this is, the quality of life in this community, that we asked the city manager to do an analysis of that particular issue and prepare a response as to why we do what we do, and what the alternatives are, and why, what if any modifications or changes should or should not be made. I just think it's an important question. It's been raised, and it should be thoroughly reviewed and answered.
Thank you. Any further questions, the staff? Thank you very much for the efforts thus far, and we look forward to a great deal more coming off your desk. So, thanks. We'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion and/or discussion. How about a motion? Actually, you know what? I'll move the staff recommendation ordinance be read in title only, forever read and be waived, and if no objection introduced. Comments to motion?
I do appreciate Dr. Gillette's comments, so I don't know if that has to be part of the motion, because I think the city manager knows already, just to look at the consultants' issue and come back with a report on that, and, you know, how much we pay on consultants, and would it be worth it to have a staff person?
I think it would, we've certainly suggested the, an urging in that direction. I don't know if it needs to be part of the motion. City attorney? None?
He said no.
No, good.
All right.
It will be done. Any comments to motion? If you please vote.
The motion carries five zero, and the ordinance title is an ordinance adding Chapter twenty-eight of Title Five of the municipal code, providing tree pruning standards for development projects with approved landscape plans, and amending Article twenty-four, Chapter Four of Title Nine, Section nine dash four point two, four oh four E, relating to parking lot landscaping.
Thank you. Okay, department reports, we have none. Redevelopment agency reports, none. Committee, commission board reports, investment review committee appointment. There is a revised memo in the supplemental which deleted council member Bill De La Pena from the interview panel. She was unavailable due to health issues. So, Dr. Gillette, you going to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Bill De La Pena and I worked out the interview process to get through this. Interviews were conducted. The two of us discussed the outcome of that, and our recommendation is, the motion is, to approve the appointment of Jim Bruno, Philly on schedule vacancy for remaining two-year term ending in July two thousand and ten, which amounts to about an eight-month appointment.
Okay, thank you. Any comments of this? Ms. Bill De La Pena?
I was ill, and thank you very much for contacting me to discuss your decision to appoint Jim Bruno the day that I was not able to participate in the interview process. It was not my intention to approve that simply because I did not participate in the interview process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not sure if you're sounding any better than what you were then, but please vote.
The motion carries four zero with council member Bill De La Pena abstaining.
And thank you. Council issues recommendations, we have no follow-up reports. And I believe that takes us to our city manager comments. Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, nothing by way of follow-up from requests from the public. Our next council meeting will be next Tuesday, November third. Two public hearings, one dealing with the area housing authorities' proposed sixty-unit affordable housing project at eight hundred West Cano School Road, or about eight hundred West Cano School Road. And the second hearing will be an update to the two thousand six to twenty fourteen housing element. At this time, we have three department reports that we're working on, and one of those is the Fire Services Operational and Financial Review Update Number Four. You'll hear from the consultant on the Community Attitude Survey. We do that every five years, and the findings from the two thousand nine survey will be presented. And then finally, we'll have an update on the traffic signal installation, excuse me, traffic signal installation priority list. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney, you going to announce a closed session?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council viewing public and members of the staff. Council will be going into closed session. There's three, four items. First one is conference with real property negotiators for the property listed at one nine four eight East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, nineteen thirty-eight East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, nineteen hundred Thousand Oaks Boulevard, two sixty-five Oakwood Drive, Thousand Oaks. The negotiators for the city is the city manager, assistant city manager, and city attorney. Negotiating parties for the property owner is Bob Marchiano and Francis Pris, under negotiation price and terms pursuant to Government Code Section fifty-four, nine fifty-six point eight. The second item is a public employee performance evaluation for the city attorney. And then, thirdly, a public employee performance evaluation for the city manager. Both of those are pursuant to Government Code Section fifty-four, nine fifty-seven. Lastly, conference with labor negotiators, city designated representative, the mayor, and human resources director, unrepresented employees, city attorney, and city manager, pursuant to Government Code Section fifty-four, nine fifty-seven point six. And, excuse me, there will not be a need to report anything out from these closed sessions.
Thank you very much. With that, we will adjourn to our regular meeting November third, two thousand and nine.